Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here for this work session this morning and appreciate everybody again being here and I hope you have a wonderful weekend. Clerk, we have a couple two men here. We have one citizen who signed up, Mr. Pierce. Larry Pierce, if you could come forth and Mr. Pierce, you know the rules. We just want to keep it civil and you have a three-minute rule. If you could state your name for me and there was your address for the record. I would appreciate it and the subject matter this morning is the Labor Day parade at the corner. Okay, got you.
Larry Pierce, 4120 Vincent Road, Douglasville, Georgia. Excuse me, I was at the river yesterday and I think my ears got too much Chattahoochee River in it. It was a disaster, I'll tell you that, yesterday. But anyway, there's two things today. And you know, I really actually enjoy coming up here. It's kind of therapy. You're getting away some of the things that I'm presently working on a new invention. But I would like to put some rumors aside by, we all kind of know what's going on as far as in the courthouse. Now, to make sure y'all understand the law, the grand jury is appointed by a judge and it's secret. By secret, I mean when it's an investigative body, otherwise it's not. And there's nobody that knows what's going on. Nobody can tell, nobody can talk, there's not a transcript, you can't be forced to testify, and anything you say cannot ever be held against you because it's to bring forth things that the country, our United States, was founded on. And that is truth to be investigated by the grand jury that was set up by the king in England years ago. Now, it's not easy to get certain things. You've got to know what to ask for. So if anybody wants to know what's going on, it's public information. This is not in the record. This is called the minutes. Didn't know what it was until a year ago. Minutes is something the judge writes, and this is in recorded book 60, page 135. And it cost me $6. It's 12 pages. And basically, it's an outline of what the judge expects the grand jury to do, okay? Now, that's just for your information. The parade was fun on Labor Day. And actually, I got a lot of humor out of it because I saw Ms. Godwin on a horse. And as the program said, a horse is a horse is a horse. Well, it's amazing to me that she has a handicap sticker and she was on a horse. She wasn't controlling the horse. Willie Watkins had somebody walking it and she was just sitting on top of it. So you might have some disability of some sort, but you're not afraid to ride a 1,500-pound animal. Well, for a little bit of humor, a horse's ear is about that long, right here, and other animals' ears are about that long. And I'm not sure which one she was on. So that's my humor for the day. But like I say, if you want to know what's going on, you can't find it, you have to know what to ask for, okay? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Pierce. We take this matter with advisement. Board of Commissioners, if you'd like to.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I mean, just to my peers and, you know, we appreciate our friends of the county and neighbors accordingly. One of the things I, it's always important, when we balance, we talk about what, we talk about our founding values and we talk about how things evolve over time. We have citizens and differences. And within our laws, there's something about discrimination, whether it's gender, whether it's disability. And there's a very thin line between what's real and what's not and how perhaps opinions are imposed on the whole. And, you know, when I, you guys know me, when I hear comments that they bully, it's important that that be defended. It's not someone's place to judge what a person can and cannot do, especially when the law comes into play. So we're being challenged to say, well, can a person do something because they have a disability? And I'd like to, I mean, it's something that we could take up, but I think that, you know, you're going to find yourself on the wrong side of that argument in being able to execute your job with a disability. Now, the mockery that occurs against our fellow peers, again, we'll leave that alone and let that stay in the First Amendment law of society as a whole to judge those things. But there are some protections, federal protections against disability, against those gender, some of the comments that we hear through public comments. And I sit here and I just, ooh, really? Huh. So I, you know, to those who have gender sensitivity, disability sensitivities, you go down the whole line of things that are found in sort of that EEOC, equal opportunity, equal employment, go look at some of those acts. And we, as a government, must ensure that we comply with those things and that we understand what they mean. So as we hear comments, we understand where the line is. So I'm going to, I think I did that in less than two minutes, but I just want to put that out to my peers as we hear this, if y'all want to take this up consideration. I'm glad to join you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're going to move on. Board of Commissioners, I just wanted to try to expedite this meeting. Those pretty busy meetings, I'm just trying to keep us on task. Approval of the minutes, be prepared tomorrow. Board of Commissioners, please, if you will, review the minutes and be prepared to approve accordingly tomorrow. Then we have a proclamation. We have a proclamation for planning the week of September the 17th through 23rd as constitutional, Constitution week in Douglas County. And that will be read by Mrs. Lee College tomorrow, so be prepared for that as well. And then also, be prepared for our approval of the minutes tomorrow, tab on the 14th, 15th, 16th, and 17th. Be prepared to approve accordingly as well. We will move back to presentation. We have a SLOs presentation, this is Terry Gable. Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board. My name is Terry Gable. I'm in Mooreland, Alta Bellin. I'll be doing the SLOs uptake for September. David Good will do a quick update on the vendors following the SLOs update. So this month, we're doing the July, reporting on the July revenues and work through our invoice through August. We're approaching, right at $28 million, the amount of money that's been invoiced. Majority of that came out of transportation this month. Fire EMS, they basically about the same, around $14 million. Transportation's up close to $9 million that we've invoiced to date. And then Parks and Recs went up some, and they're right at $2.4 million is where we're current standing. So right at $28 million to date through August that's invoiced. Continuing good news with the revenues. We were just under $2.4 million for July, so hopefully the economy will stay solid and we'll continue to get these good numbers going through, at least with a foreseeable future through year three, which will end March, March 31st. So we're in about the 28th month of the program overall. So as long as we keep it above that graph, we should be in good shape. Just to give you some quick totals for SLOs year three, there's the hard numbers for the revenues that came in. If you compare that to what was projected for year three, we're just under a million dollars of overage for year three. And then looking at the whole program in general, we're even showing a better overage with that, with about $2.2 million comparing the full 28-month, the revenues versus the projections. So good news there and we'll truck in with those numbers and see how the economy does over the next year. And then just a quick report on the bond service and payment obligations. We'll make that first payment in October 1st for the payback this year, and then the larger one will be in April of 2020. So with that, we'll jump in and do some quick updates on the projects. The list of the projects that have been completed up to this point in fire. So the countywide digital radio system, still progressing along. Obviously, we're still waiting on FCC's final approval on the agreement with that South Tower. So Motorola's waiting cautiously and trying to move forward with some work on it. Outside of that, we're doing, they're doing user training and moving forward with finishing up equipment. We're still working towards the end of the year for them to go live with the system. And like we reported last month, we'll do the final testing will have to be in the spring of next year, when the fellowages back on the trees, to get the true numbers when they do the final test. The one ambulance that was on order, we're still waiting on that. No updates on that. It'll right now scheduled to be in in October. And the fire truck is in fabrication or will start soon. Everything's set to go there. The chief and him had a pre-bid meeting on it. They've got the specs for it and they're moving forward with getting a schedule set up and we'll start that soon. Stations three, we're just hanging on here, trying to get that, the final few things done. It was, the contractor had to come back in and do some warranty work for the chief, but that's scheduled for next week and we'll move this one to another completed project. And then last, with the vehicles in fire, there were three vehicles total for the year. Two of them have been delivered, still, I think add some equipment to one of them. And then the chief and I will step back and look at the budget and see what's remaining in the budget for equipments for this year and then decide on what the next purchase will be. So with that, we'll move into transportation. Projects that are completed. The resourcing program, which includes your SLOs roads and the L-MIG, is ongoing. CW Matthews is in Douglas County. Miguel tells me they've moved out a couple times, but the work should be, no problem for CW to finish the work this year, past schedule. And they're moving forward with the resourcing program. The payment evaluations, we'll be doing a presentation to the transportation meeting tomorrow to, just an overview, kind of bring everyone up to where we're currently at with it and then what will be the last things remaining for Mooreland to do and working with Miguel's staff as far as training and turning over the license to them. So everything's basically ready, the spreadsheets there, we'll have, those will be provided to the board for you two. And moving into the intersections, Stewart Mill Road at Reynolds Road, the right-of-way is ongoing here. There's eight, eight or nine parcels that are having to be acquired. Easements are on right-of-way. The plans are being submitted this week. If Miguel doesn't already have them, these are final plans for review and comments to get back to Jacobs. So we're getting close with this. It'll boil down to the right-of-way and how long it takes to get those parcels acquired. Bright Star and John West, the right-of-way is complete on this. We're finishing up a small amount of utility coordination and it'll be ready to let, just to be the next one outside of the one we just currently got let at Sweetwater. This will be the next one that'll go to construction. And then speaking of Sweetwater, Church Road, Doris Road, that project was let. It's on the agenda for the board's approval for the low bid. Once that's done, there'll be a notice to proceed issue and the contractor can start And then Chapel Hill Road, a larger intersection project design, still ongoing here. Utility coordination has started, so everything's progressing and we're on track with everything up to this point with Chapel Hill. Highway five at Douglas Boulevard, this one will be, the design will start on this once we get final task orders signed with the on-call consultant. They'll start the design for this and then we'll move into right-of-way and utilities. Coast Road Bridge, no change there. Miguel still has one parcel to acquire there. It's a small amount of right-of-way, but he is having some issues. We're working through that. Hopefully, with the timing of that versus when the contractor's ready to come into Douglas County, the GDOT contractor will, everything will be done and we'll be ready to go set and go work on that one. Our three sidewalk projects, the first two, Lithia Springs and Chestnut Lock, are in the right-of-way phase. Miguel's telling me that we're making good progress with a school. There's a school at Lithia Springs that we're having to get some right-of-way for, but both of those are moving very well. It should be a fairly quick turnaround on the right-of-way. There was only just a few parcels that we needed to get. And then the remaining sidewalk project is at the high school and GDOT has that application for permit and is reviewing it. Once we get that back, there was no right-of-way that was needed on the high school, at the high school. It was just, once we get the permit in, we'll be ready to let that project. So a lot going on and a lot of things getting ready to get out on the street. Just a real quick update on White Stone Culvert. Miguel had the pre-construction meeting. It was held. Notice to proceed has been given to the contractor and work to start hopefully within either this week or next week. And we'll see some actual work going on out there to get that badly needed culvert replaced. Our street lights, we've gotten approval on the first project, which was the lights at the interchange on 20. My understanding that GDOT's got to review that, review the plans for it. Once that's completed, George Power and Grace Duncan set a schedule and we'll move forward with that. The Highway 92 project, again, has been, GDOT has agreed to do a quick response project on that and we're just letting, let that work itself out. They're, it's in the design phase and should start within, right now, that's Miguel's last comments with him, that that project was probably going to be moved, could be moved to the first of the year as far as the start time. Well, we'll keep you updated as GDOT updates us on their progress. And then Highway 92 at Riverside Parkway, this will be another project that'll be assigned to an on-call consultant. Once we get that going, we'll get the design started, start developing a scope for it. And then the Lee Road widening project, again, this is the larger project we're partnering with GDOT on. And if you remember, Michael Baker's been approved to do the design for that and is really just bringing the plans up to date and then trying to get the construction schedule worked out for the future, once that's done, and the funding. Maxim Road, so authorization for the construction funding agreement with GDOT is on the agenda. Once that's done, Miguel can get approval from GDOT to start this project, it'll move into construction. Another project that's going to be started very soon. With that, that wraps up transportation and we'll quickly go through parks. These completed projects, Deer Lake Park Tennis Courts will be advertised this week. Once we get that, we can get some hard numbers on the budget and we'll step back and look at where we're at with that project in parks and see how, make some decisions on moving forward with some of the other projects. And the same thing with the multi-purpose rec center and also the senior center. Bill, I'll have all three of these projects will be advertised this week. We'll have that on the street and be looking for the bids to come in. And then the last two here is Bill Art and Fair Play. These concession buildings have been let out. We have the bids in and we're holding all of those, as I mentioned earlier, with Deer Lake to set back. Once these hard numbers come in, we'll make some decisions on moving forward with the projects based on the budget. And then finally, with Gary's equipment, I think we've got a small amount of money there to try to decide what he wants to use, but close to wrapping that up for the year. And with that, I'll take any questions, board members, before David comes up.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Gable. Any questions for the Board of Commissioners at this time? If I should...
Couple questions. Maxim Road, that's on the agenda, the Maxim Road sidewalk, right, is a project. How long do we think that will take to be completed?
So the project, the Maxim Road project is the GDOT intersection project?
Yeah.
Is there sidewalk, is there sidewalk in there?
Yeah, there's sidewalk, but not, not the sidewalk project nor SLOs.
Not confusing with the...
Yeah. Miguel, go ahead. You know what I mean.
Yeah, it includes sidewalks on both sides of Maxim Road from Thornton Road up probably about 1,000 feet or so. That's the GDOT project. Then there is a gap from there to the Cobb County line. That is one of the projects that is, we have an on-call consultant that was assigned as a task order once the, once the documents are signed.
I understand. Thank you, I'm good on that. So again, intersection is something that, this was an important intersection. Obviously, there have been casualties. This is one of the most dangerous intersections, probably west of Atlanta. This is something that we've been monitoring for quite some time and so I'm encouraged to see this moving forward. Obviously, this is something that we've worked with our colleagues over, over in Cobb County. Obviously, their district obviously fees in two hours, I'm going at 20. So this was an important project and I'm just glad to see it moving forward. Lee Road, Lee Road is moving forward. Your comment was that we're waiting for the state to approve. Say that again, just refresh your...
The Lee Road widening project, it's Michael Baker's been hired to update the plans.
Yeah.
And that's where we're at with that project currently, is they're moving forward with updating the plans.
Yeah.
To finalize those and to work out any environmental revisions that need to be done. And then moves from there.
Okay, so I think, and again, we'll probably pick this up in transportation, so there's more of me just setting where I'll be going tomorrow. But in essence, I think that project was, what, April of next year, supposed to be starting construction? We're just trying to level set the community, right? It's always, that's important. All right, so if April, it's been stated, and I think I saw it somewhere, that April, perhaps March or April of next year, that project will begin. Do we think that this Michael Baker's work will be done in time to meet that schedule? I mean, what's currently being out there or help me understand?
Yeah, I'm sure the date of April of next year is when the project is supposed to be advertised.
Okay.
Now, the process, as you know, is prolonged whenever the feds are involved, so it's going to be several months. Let's say that we advertise it in April. It's going to be at least a month for bids to come back in. We're going to go through committee. It'll get here, perhaps sometime in late May, second meeting, May, early June. Then, once the board approves at this level, it has to be referred back to GDOT and they send it to Federal Highway.
Yeah.
So there's going to be several months time period for their review. Then it comes back here with a funding contract, very similar to what's on the agenda today or maybe tomorrow, as it relates to Maxim Road. So from, from the bid date, there's probably five to six months of procedural administrative stuff that happens before you actually would award a contract for construction. So if any construction, if we let the contract, if we advertise in April, we wouldn't be looking at any physical construction until very late in the year.
All right, and that's right. So we're looking at no brim brush, give or take. So part of, and thank you, Miguel, you're good. I'm just framing something. You know, I'm not believing my comments and I'm still going to push on account of the administration provider, a reforecast of projects. We're out here right now, we're in the season where we're communicating in various meetings, town halls. We've got a September sagging coming up and we're setting the public's expectation on when things are going to occur. We had an original baseline schedule and things, they changed. And the staff is just able to, you know, for whatever reason, I don't have enough staff, I can't, I can't fulfill what we originally laid out as it relates to a schedule. In other words, we laid out a schedule, staff had to get in there and based on reality, they had to type stuff up, just got to go to this part and that part. And the reality is, is that perhaps they're not quite aligned. But we have an original baseline on when things are going to hit. And I'm looking at this and I want to make sure I understand the reality of, well, years four and five are going to be tight for our managers. And we're making decisions based on information, intelligence this staff provides us. And I just want to make sure we're clear. I'm not going anywhere with this, but you guys have asked for a reforecast. I expect to see it today at 2:00 at Finance Committee. I mean, I haven't heard otherwise and I was told last week...
So we have moved, we have a special call finance meeting for that portion tomorrow morning at 8:30.
I'd like to go...
The reason we had to move and I've got, you know, I have to go to this afternoon, so that's more wrap of that.
Yeah, and well, again, so we need this information. There's some concerns, at least from my office, on where we are. Not in a bad sense, but for lack of, I've got an operational budget that's managed by finance. I have a SLOs budget that's managed by program managers and I've got the administration's call to balance to give me a single view of the program, of where things are. We're making decisions based on intelligence, all right? And so right now, I'm not going anywhere. I'm just sort of like, okay, guys, there's a lot of moving parts. We just get the reforecast so we can better understand where things are. I've heard a couple of dates on when things are coming, come and go and see one where we'll come, one person will say something and somebody else will come up and say, well, this is really this. It's like, okay, guys, what's truth? Right? And everybody's got ownership in it. I appreciate that. So not, this is not a criticism. This is constructive, like, can we get a single view of where things are based on choices that we made? The Board of Commissioners takes responsibility for, well, guidance that we give, no doubt. But I'm looking for like, okay, so when are these donations coming online? When will these things happen, so that we can communicate effectively? How is the cash flow going to come against that? How does that impact my general fund? That's what we're looking for. So County Commissioner, you said we're going to be able to have this information soon? How about this week? Sometime this week?
Tomorrow, tomorrow morning.
Okay. I just want to frame that. So that's part of a, I won't say as much later on during the committee updates, but this is important because the SLOs is something that we're all excited about. I think there will be good things. Don't get me wrong, there's a lot of work, there's a lot of efforts by staff, there was to get this out here. The public has been waiting. We just want to make sure that we're, we're setting expectations on when they're going to come and pass. And so when we hear that, you know, perhaps we're behind or we're off track, we need to know the truth. We, as commissioners, need to know the truth on where things really are so we can set the public's expectations. And sometimes rumors, innuendo, propaganda gets set forth. Like was said, we want to make sure we understand the truth. So Madam Chair, I just ask that we... So Madam Chair, I just ask that we, as soon as we need. That's all I need, everything else is fine. Thank you, thank you, Chair, you're good, thank you.
I think we all know that government moves so slowly. We have to talk about an issue for about a decade or two before we actually see something going, dirt being moved. Let's go back to the Reynolds, the Stewart Mill Reynolds intersection that Commissioner Carson and I share. She's got one side of the road, I got the other side. Would you go over that part again because I forgot to even talk about that. We went at earlier this morning, so...
So the, the good news is, and it was critical to get, get Miguel's staff the right of way plans as soon as we were able to do that. And Jacob's got it to that point and they're working on that right of way. Like I said, eight or nine parcels, thereabouts. And get that critical part of it done. And then we can move into final plans and, and getting everything as far as utilities and everything coordinated and getting that set. And then go to construction. This will, current where we're at right now is right of way phase and moving through that.
So, but we do have the design?
Yes, and...
We've already got the design completed.
It's under review, it'll be under review, the final plans for it.
Okay, and is there any kind of estimated time of bidding this job out?
You're telling me as far as the construction time?
Yes.
The length of time it takes to...
To bid, to bid out the construction part of it, yes.
With to bid, to go through the bid process is what Miguel was leading to earlier. It's about a two month, I mean, from the time we...
No, when will we be able to bid it out?
To bid it out?
End of spring.
End of spring, based on estimates on right of way and how long Miguel's estimating the right of way would take?
Because as Commissioner Robinson was talking about, the dangerous intersections, that's a very dangerous intersection.
Sure.
And it prohibits the flow of traffic tremendously in that area. And that's a cut through road, it's very heavily traveled. But just pulling out sometimes from Reynolds Road, you're taking your life in your hands, especially in the mornings or in the afternoons. But that was two thousand two, that was supposed to have been done with the two thousand old spot. So these people, especially in the Chapel Hill subdivision up through there, this is critical for them. And we've had a lot of, when we've gone through the SPOS, town halls and everything, that we've brought up several times. So I hope we can push this as fast as we can. We don't have DOT to work with. So it's just us, it's just us, we don't have that layer of government that we deal with. So I'd like to see this move as fast as possible. With that, I give up.
Okay, thank you so much. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, just, just a couple we want to go back to, but just one thing. So the reforecast plan of projects, Mark, you said you guys are going to have something, I think that needs to be shared with probably the entire board.
It will be.
So we can actually see what the projects are, where they are, what we, what we're looking like, what kind of timeframe, what shift did dollars and all that kind of big stuff?
Sure.
Okay, is that, that stool?
Yes.
Okay, good, okay. You mentioned about a couple of payments, the large payments that were kind of, you know, starting to, to come online. There's one in October, I think you mentioned, and there's one in April twenty twenty. What are those, what are those dollars amount, just for the general public?
So the, the one in October, I believe is just under a million. The one in October is nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six twenty-five, and then the one April first is eighteen thousand, eighteen million. Nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand.
Got it, got it, and just for the general public so they can understand kind of what that means that we're all speaking about and know what that, what that looks like.
Sure.
And kind of how that will affect your reforecast of the, the projects that, that you've got online, that will be coming online, that are in the coffer and all that kind of good stuff.
Correct.
Okay, okay, all right, good. All right, now, last but not least, sidewalk project, another thing that's been going on for... Yes, let's, let's just, I mean, by time, we might not even need the project, I mean, the sidewalks. So can you give me just one real kind of, where we are, what kind of timeframe? And will you guys be walking this year or are we going to be out of school next year? Doing, any idea what that sidewalk project, I just, you know, I noticed, Miguel, if you can help us out?
Sure.
Walk us through it.
Yes, yes, please walk us through this.
Yes, all three of the projects are very close to the point where we advertise after we get the right of way that we need. And there's a couple of parcels...
You don't have all the right of way then?
We do not, yeah.
Doubt it, okay.
That, because we, we have to wait until the design is pretty far along to begin the right of way acquisition. So we're at that point now where we're having title searches done and appraisals done on the parcel. Luckily, a lot of the parcels were, belong to the school. And so we've worked through the process there. We've engaged discussion through the Board of Education and it looks like that's going to be one of the first acquisitions. But there's a couple of parcels on each of those projects with the exception of the high school. The issue there is it's on a state route, so it has to be reviewed. We're proposing to install a, a flashing beacon at a crosswalk to get the, the students from one side of the street, obviously, to, to the school side. That has to be approved by G dot, so that's, that application has been submitted. We're anticipating that they will approve that and then on that one, we'll be ready to move to construct, to advertise for construction as soon as we get that. We anticipate, it's probably going to be another couple of months before we finish the acquisition on the other two. So before the end of the year, we would, we would be at a juncture where all three of those projects could be advertised for construction. They could be advertised all at once or as soon as we finish the high school, we can advertise that one and the other two will follow shortly thereafter. The expectation is that, that construction is probably going to be in the sixth to nine month timeframe. And so by the end of next summer, we would anticipate all of those projects should be completed.
Now, I've heard this summer dance a while now, so I, I hope we're, this is truly the dance, you know?
That's, that's where we are now. We're ready to advertise in, in the next couple of months.
Okay, this is, you know, this has been a long process, so, yeah. All right, and last but not least, you spoke about the, the tennis courts. Give me that, the, the tennis court project again so I can kind of make sure what we, I know we'll probably have a conversation again in Parks and Rec Committee, but I just want to kind of put it to the general public.
It'll be, it'll be advertised for construction this week?
This week, okay. And, and we're looking at out, what, what kind of possible timeframe we're looking at to get on the courts, I guess?
If, if we move forward.
Okay.
With the project and, so we're looking again to go through the bidding process of thirty days, another month to, to review it and then if we award the low bid and move forward with it, nine months for the actual construction, once they start, as the scope's designed right now.
Okay, so we're looking at second, end of second quarter, early third quarter of next year?
Next year.
Before we are actually, you want to play some tennis?
Yes.
Okay, all right, just want to get my, my shoes and stuff ready so that's on...
Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell.
Just, just one, Miguel.
Yes, ma'am.
So I know we talked about the Chapel Hill right of ways, but our first focus was the sidewalks for that project heading down towards Chapel Hill High School. So can you give me an update on that? Because what I don't want, one constituent asked me, is that in us getting right of ways, will the sidewalk project be held up till we get all of them? So can you give me a little light on that?
Okay, this, well, before we're ready to advertise for construction on the right...
For the sidewalk?
For the sidewalk, it's the, it's two projects combined. There is a turn lane widening project and the sidewalk project along the same stretch of road. Both of those are combined. That project, we would have potentially forty-some parcels that would be impacted.
Just for that?
Just for that.
Okay.
Now, the question, I think what you're alluding to is if we were to acquire the right of way for the future widening, the, the extra lane, would it impact that project? It's going to take about the same amount of time because the process that we have to go through is to identify the, the amount of area that is, that is impacted and what the value of that is. So it, it doesn't really impact the schedule as much, but it does impact the funding that, that you may need. Not necessarily order of magnitude, but there will be an incremental value to the additional right of way. We're not at the juncture where we have identified what area we would, we would need for this project versus the future project. But when we get to that junction, I'll have a discussion with the board.
And actually, we do the opposite. So the intersections were part of the project, I mean, part of the SPOS. And if you don't review the intersection, that is the time to put in the sidewalk. So the sidewalks were... When the sidewalks first been intersection.
It was the intersection and the sidewalk.
That's the time for the sidewalks, because it's cheaper.
So we need, we just need to let the public know that because they're anticipating sidewalks. So they keep asking me because that's what they heard at the, at the town hall. And so I just kind of wanted to make it clear what, what's going on. But thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just again, for the clarity, so again, I'm coming in, I'm thinking I've got two o'clock Finance Committee to talk about this reforecasting. And this is important, I know, again, what, we're what, going into our fourth year, three and a half years in?
Going into, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's okay. Now, three and a half years in, I, I just, just for the, and Chair, this is before you, but, but at the very beginning, we were considering doing the SPOS and we're so thankful for obviously the public voting for it. But in the, in the wisdom of the Board of Commissioners, we recognize to do, unlike the jail, which was a single building, right? From a program management, you can watch it, right? It's right here, it's not a lot of moving parts and that is one single building. Doing the SPOS is all over the county is a different animal. It's spread all over, multiple projects going at the same time, right? Different type of critical path management, different type of funding management, right? Single building, all over the county, two of the approaches. So we recognize that from an oversight, how important program management was going to be. And unlike the jail, we paid two points on oversight for that, two million dollars. On this one, we're like, okay, this is important. Again, staff is good at doing what they're responsible, you got Transportation does this, Parks does this. But being able to manage this across the whole county, we recognize, oh, we probably want to pay a premium on this with just four points, four million dollars. And I remember we went through the process, you guys remember, it's all filmed on TV and stuff. We looked at the two people that bid it for this. There was Atkins, there was the Morley Russell team. And one of the questions that was fundamental, it was like, okay, if something ever gets off, you come clean and be honest about it and let us know what's going on. And I remember I asked that question a couple of times and I remember Mr. Morley himself stood up on that side. "Commissioner Robinson, you've asked that question twice." Now, I don't know, again, I, it was something that maybe happened in the past. And I wasn't hitting on something historical, but it was that important to us. And again, this reforecasting that we're asking for, I don't want it to go to be dropped. We're getting busy now, right? And so it's one of those where, and my concern is I'm hearing different messages, right? One of the things that we have to do is not only just managing the SPOS, which is capital, but we also have general fund impacts, right? And, and some of our decisions are made based on the intelligence this provided, right? It doesn't need to be, we want to know, from a Board of Commissioner, we want to know the truth so we can set expectations. Don't tell us what you think we want to hear. We really need to know, okay, so how's the schedule, how's the financing? And let us make that ultimate call on how this goes down. But I'm just, I'm only emphasizing, I'm, I'm, this, this is important, this reforecast. And so I, again, Madam Chair, I'm, I cannot underemphasize or overemphasize how important this information is. So if we're going to get this tomorrow, to Commissioner Mitchell's point, this wasn't so much as to keep it within the committee. All the Board of Commissioners need to know it, but the point is, we need to get that information as soon as possible. So hopefully, we asked for it two, oh, a month or so ago, we said, we're still, what we can do in the first, I said, well, take a couple of months. I know what I was doing, I, I gave time, so I think it's about time, so I hope to look forward to getting that information.
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Gable, and I believe this debate is coming up to give us a quick update for burning out vendors.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners, David Good, I'm the Communications Director for the SPOS. And as you can see up here, we now are at about ninety-eight total vendors. Thirty-six of those vendors are right here in Douglas County. Twenty-eight of those vendors are right outside of Douglas County. And the, the rest of the vendors are what we will call non-local, more than thirty miles outside of the county. Right now, we do have thirty-four active projects and thirty-three that are, are part of that completed list that you guys see each time. I'll do it from my actual page so I can make sure I'm on the microphone. But as you can see here, this is where sixty-six percent of the vendors are actually considered local. So those numbers are usually fluctuate between the sixty-six and sixty-seven percent. Of those, we actually encounter our revenue are about forty-eight percent of the SPOS goes to that sixty-seven percent. So right now, that's usually about the amount that we've been doing for the last couple of months. And we really are making the emphasis of reaching out to Douglas County vendors. I know sometimes we look at those who actually go to the Chamber of Commerce and they're, they're also considered local, but we actually look at those who are actually right here in Douglas County. And we make strong visits really to District Three and Four, where a lot of the, a lot of business owners are. So we actually talk to people in those areas, letting them know we have the SPOS going on. Make sure that you guys come out and actually participate because these are your dollars being spent. You might as well also be able to reap some of the benefits of it. And then with the percentage of the minority, it's fifty-eight percent non-minority and forty-two percent minority. In the beginning, we really were close to maybe nine percent minority. That number has increased because we have been reaching out to the community, letting them know this is something that Douglas County is working towards. So I'm glad to see that this number is continuing to rise and hopefully we'll be able to make sure that we let every citizen, no matter what, you know, no matter what type of category they fall in, that they actually have the opportunity to work with the SPOS and benefit from the SPOS. And with that, that's it for mine. Are there any questions?
Okay, any questions from the, Commissioner Parkin?
Yes, you did, when you say minority, what group constitutes minority?
Um, that's everything from those that's considered DVE, MBE, in the business own. Some of them are also are veteran disabled, if they actually have put down their veteran disabled. A lot of times you can actually go to the, their website and they'll put down who their owner is. And a lot of times they have pictures, so there's certain things you can tell just by looking at a picture, but others based on their classification. So we don't just look at who, what they're certified as, we also just look at, you know, who they are, if they put down anything. So that's the way they're ready to tell.
So we capture this by going to the website or going to the place of business?
Right, website, place of business, and also we'll go online to the DOTs, especially within transportation. This DOT does require some of that part of it. And then such as with one of the car dealerships in Union City, I was able to actually go to their website and I saw who the owner was and I was able to tell that they were in like a minority business.
All right, thank you.
One quick question, does it include women?
Yes, yes. And in fact, I believe a largest one is a woman on SEI Southeast Engineering.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, listen, this is, we don't have to get on it now, but perhaps someone can come explain how we identify... explain how we identify, unless they report, how we identify. And I'm talking out loud. Think about the census. There's a very thin line where, it's a very thin line, but we're trying to track. Unless they report, if we're going out there and we're going, I'm gonna say you're this, but I haven't told you I'm that, I wanna be careful what I'm hearing, right? There has to be a formal process where this information is provided, which is validated. What we can't do is draw conclusions about what we're looking at. Just something that I'm like, okay, how are we handling the census? So however the formal process is, as long as we're compliant with that, I'm fine, but I wanna make sure. And if we do it a different way, let's make sure we separate the two. So I understand when y'all say y'all are reporting and how we're gathering information, if somebody chooses not to report, because they choose not to report, we can't impose, how do you avoid imposing, if I chose not to report what I am? I don't report, I'm disabled. And you're saying, well, he's disabled. I don't want that reported. How do you, how do you deal with that? There's nothing to solve now, and this is more for, I guess, we're taking internally, it's more of a, now, how y'all gonna do that now? And so what we're looking at is really based on what's formally certified reporting versus maybe internal, how are we, I wanna know how are we doing that, Madam Chair, how does the census do it? So can we take that offline? Make sure our reports are active on here?
Yeah, we need something measureable and sustainable, something that.
Yeah, just, more just what I heard, I'm not going anywhere with it, thank you.
Okay, we'll take care. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We will take care. And you heard the gist of what Commissioner Robinson just mentioned, right? We have an idea, we need something more formal in terms of how we're identifying those DVEs and MBEs.
Okay, and one of the things that we definitely do is that with the disabled, that was just one of, if someone reports they're disabled. The only ones that we actually have problems with are those that don't report up to DOT because they're the best way to track. So if a company like a car dealership puts down just information, they don't report on anything unless I research it. So I can always, you know, provide that information to you guys.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, board commissioners, we'll move on to our next slide. We, this tab, tab number five on the public hearing is to consider amending the Douglas County Code of Ordinance, Chapter fourteen, Article five, Traffic Regulations, Section fourteen dash seventy-two, C, Zones prohibiting trucks with more than six wheels. The county would consider adding the following roads to this, to a list of roads to where trucks over six wheels are prohibited. Those roads are Tyree Road, Liberty Road, portions of East Carroll Road, and Brubers Lake Road, and directed balancing.
Yes, good morning again, Madam Chair and Commissioners. We have had a number of reports and complaints regarding trucks utilizing those routes, and we have gone out and looked at the road condition, looked at the routes, and confirmed that having trucks in any kind of volume utilizing those routes is not in the best interest. And so we are, in order for us to be able to add these roads at the prohibition along these roads, we have to have a public hearing, and that is what we would be doing tomorrow. When we get a request or we get a complaint regarding any particular route, we do some field investigation to confirm, and these are the roads that we have gone out and studied. Now, with Liberty Road, the complaint was essentially anywhere along Liberty Road. Well, Liberty Road does go into the city of Lulurica, and obviously, we would not be able to control or put that segment on our list, but it would go from Post Road all the way up to the city limits. Along that route, just the way it lays out, there is a section of East Carroll Road that is a joint East Carroll Road and Liberty Road segment, and so that is, that's the reason East Carroll is included as well.
Okay. Any questions for Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes. And this does involve these roads that you listed today, but I mean, a general question, I've talked with Bobby Holmes about the traffic on Bright Star Road as a result of the huge warehouse complex right there on Bright Star. And the portion I'm concerned with is from the connector up to Douglas Boulevard, which is all residential at present. And there's a school, there's a road that leads to a school right there. Is there any way that we can direct those trucks? Because it's not, that part of Bright Star Road is not designated no trucks. From Douglas Boulevard up to Highway five from that point, yes, although we still see the dump trucks going up and down there. But is there any way that we can direct, say, Truck Route, a sign, trying to get them to go down the connector rather than going up to Douglas Boulevard? Because that's all residential from that point.
There is perhaps something we can do in terms of an outreach to the businesses that are there, the manufacturing concerns. Even if we were to add these, those roads or that road to the list, this does not apply when there is a business that they have to access along that route. So it would not preclude them from using that route.
But they also have a state highway, and they also have the connector in which to access that business.
Correct.
So if we could just direct the trucks, maybe with a sign that just says Truck Route, and point it down the connector so that they will turn there rather than going on up to Douglas Boulevard, that would help some. But I don't know if we can even do that, but we have a big problem with Bright Star Road.
We can look into what is feasible for that area, and then I'll report back to you.
All right, thank you. May I go back?
Okay, thank you so much. Commissioner Mitchell?
Just a couple of questions. So this is just more of a signage, or this is nothing more than just allowing public safety to enforce, or, I mean, help me out. So what are we doing here outside of what signage? And can you ever add this to G dot Article, Chapter fourteen, Article five, whatever that is?
With this article, Section fourteen dash seventy-two, what it would do is prohibit trucks that are not conducting business along that road from using that road to cut through on their way somewhere else. So it allows the sheriff's department to enforce that.
Okay, so that's, okay, so will there be signage posted?
Yes.
So these guys will know? Because I think sometimes their GPS just kinda takes them around, and sometimes they get off the track, but, I mean, there's no excuse for the law, but, so there will be signage. Now, with that being said, there's a couple other places. Does this article fit, I mean, or also enforce in other places like, is it Beechwood Market? Help me out with this, Cherokee Boulevard, which has no way to cut through and all? Is that, is this same enforcement ordinance is being imposed on these guys as well so they can understand that side of it? Or is it, I mean, I know Cherokee, this is partially in the city, partially in the county, so that's a kind of a tricky situation with, dealt with traffic, truck traffic, cutting through to get to seventy-eight. It's in either Beechwood, I think it is, is that right?
Refresh my memory, but didn't we already pass this for those streets?
I believe we did, yeah, for Cherokee, I believe we did.
I think we had it Beechwood too, but we have to check to make sure.
We would have to check.
If it's already handled.
Okay, so.
But to your point, that is, that is the ordinance that would apply regardless of.
All right, so can we verify and make sure that they're on the list? Second of all, and if the signage is a thing, because I know there's, there is one coming off Fairland to Cherokee to kinda hopefully give them the offset, not making that right turn on to Cherokee. And because once you make that turn, you're kinda like stuck.
Turn right.
Right, 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 you're kinda stuck at that point. So can we make sure those, those two for sure, to include definitely Beechwood? Because I think that's been a, you know, a running situation that the sheriff and I have been actually trying to address, you know? Because at one time, I think it was said, even at Cherokee, that the sheriff can't write tickets from enforcement on that particular road. And I said, and I talked to the sheriff, and he said, that's absolutely incorrect. So we've had some community conversations about that, that particular road, and to include Beechwood about these kind of situations, and how can we address it? You know, I just hate when the truckers get caught up on that road by making a turn onto it and they can't back up. But I just wanna make sure that this will apply to those two roads for sure. So while we're doing this, let's just make sure it definitely applies, and that the sheriff has definitely stated to me that there's, that's totally incorrect, that they can't write tickets on those roads. But I just wanna verify that, just to make sure, so we kinda have this next meeting and make sure that we're covered. Okay. Outside of that, I'll yield back.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. All right, thank you so much. We move on to Table six to consider amending the Douglas County Code of Ordinance, Chapter fourteen, Article three, Utility Easement, Section fourteen dash forty through fourteen dash forty-five and fourteen dash fifty-four, and adding new Article nine, Sections fourteen dash one oh one through fourteen dash one oh five pertaining to regulating the small wireless facilities and antennas in the public right-of-way. Andrew Roberts, how you doing?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner. Good morning. So in September of last year, the FCC decided they needed to make change to ordinances surrounding 5G. The reason for that is that the United States is currently third in the race for getting 5G technology out behind China and South Korea. And so by December, twenty-two states had already passed changes to reflect what was being mandated, and then it came down to the Georgia Legislature last year, who made it a goal to promote 5G wireless internet service through the uniform statewide fees and policies, compensate local governments for their oversight and companies' use of public rights-of-way, review the fees to use public rights-of-way and ensure they're based on actual costs incurred by governments, encourage poll owners to negotiate with telecommunications and cable companies to allow the placement of 5G technology, and require county and city governments to charge lower fees than the Georgia Department of Transportation for their use of local rights-of-way. So this was actually codified in thirty-six dash sixty-six C at the state, and it actually dictates in the legislation, which all comes effective on October first, twenty nineteen, the actual rates and fees that are being, that we're told from the state that we can have. So by doing so, we're gonna take this ordinance and roll these fees into there so that we can assess these fees. Also, we're gonna get in line with what we're being mandated so we can have the telecommunications providers have access to the right-of-way. The fees that are being assessed is a hundred dollars per small wireless facility. Each application for replacement poles, two hundred and fifty dollars. Fee for application for new poles is a thousand dollars. So we're, all this stuff has been codified, and I mean, all this, that's what we're trying to do here today. We need to put this in our ordinance, Article fourteen, Section three, so that we can actually have this on our books, so that we can actually charge for these fees, so we can actually have a presence in the right-of-way. We went through the Transportation Subcommittee and talked about this the other day. 5G technology is different than cell technology. The towers that you see before, this is a technology that's gonna get closer to the ground, the reason being, 5G eventually run ten times faster than 4G. It's gonna run autonomous vehicles, it's gonna be out there in these corridors. The ordinance also prescribes what they can do as it relates to pole height, decorative poles, all that stuff is laid out, and that's what's in the packet in front of you of those changes to compensate for those, for the new codes that are being, being out there. All the counties are having to deal with this. And like I said, everything goes in place October first. So that's why we're gonna need to have a public hearing. We wanted to also, we were asked as Transportation Subcommittee to kinda give you an idea of what this looks like. Let me see. So the example Phil pulled for us on Paul, kinda gives you an idea. The timeline, sorry. And some more. So there's distances that these units have to be from each other. Each of the providers are gonna have their own frequencies, they're gonna have their own desires, they're gonna have their own ideal corridors. We don't know where those corridors are. Part of the regulations require that they meet with us out of good faith, which they, we've had two providers that have come and met with us, but we really don't know the details yet of where they, where these corridors might be. Assume that they'll probably act to place them in the most populated areas, that makes the most sense financially for them, but we don't know. Is there any questions about the code itself?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, this is a, this is a request for a public hearing, right?
Yes, it is.
All right, so, and again, we did talk about this in our Transportation Committee, but this is one of those where, okay, we need to take it to the full board, y'all need to hear what they said. Obviously, this is coming from the federal level down, telecommunications, the power of their lobby is probably only second to, obviously, the railroad. It has a sovereigness, it is what it is, right? So, okay, we're responding, as you heard him say, it's the states, which means by default, it's gonna get mandated to us, no problem. But when you look at this, and I'm looking at, and I'm like, okay, I get it, 5G, brand-new technology. What was originally proposed is that this was supposed to be a solution to the rural areas, that was stated. It was stated in the committee meeting, but it was rural. But now that the legislation has passed, what some of the providers have said is that we're gonna target initially the most populated areas. Okay, so you gotta pay attention to the off-talk sometime, it's like, okay, wait a minute, what now? All right, so one of them, you know, they were targeting most densely populated area is right there along Skyview, Commissioner Mitchell, our area, so, you know, dense population is federal where the need really is. It's like, interesting that they picked that as a target. Now, again, open record, you might wanna go get what was presented to us, y'all can do that, but my point is this, look at the distance between each one of these poles and this thing, it's like, oh my God. Think about the current poles, and now you're talking about in between these poles, and it's like, brand-new networks, and they may not be on their poles, it's like, this is gonna be like the Jetsons. How busy is our landscape gonna be with these little 5G poles? And I get the benefit of it, but it has the potential to reshape our landscape. Like, what is the aesthetics gonna be once, I mean, again, it's small right now, it's gonna take time, you know, it's gonna take a long time for this to sort of get all out like telephone poles and all the things that are in place, but it's just something that makes you, you gotta have sort of a futuristic view of, you know, you have strategist, you have futurist, you gotta sort of forecast it like, oh my God, what are y'all really saying? It's all in the name of making money, but I get it, I know we want the technology, but you know, do you know what the impact is gonna be on our lives for this benefit? That's all I wanna say. Do you understand the impact on our, our physical landscape for the benefit of this higher technology, right? And so, and the thing is, as my understanding confirmed for me, again, you can bring these up in your comments with your public when they come here, which is, do you understand you're gonna have both these networks, the current network is out there, and you're gonna add this one, and they both are gonna be going at the same time, and you're not gonna, I didn't hear in our committee, that you're gonna replace the old network. They both are gonna be. That's gonna get sort of busy. Now, my other question, and this is confirmation, it's not being said, is that this is not underground, right? This is wires on top, disconnecting all these two, that ultimately goes back to a tower or something? Some type of power source?
Yeah, it's, they'll have to be connected in the right-of-way through a power source from pole to pole. So it is both. So it is both.
Pay attention, right? I just want to highlight that. I mean, everything else is good, the code, which Manager Roberts has planned out, I'm comfortable with, that's why I said break it forth. I just want to bring out these highlights, let y'all, and talk to y'all public as they weigh in. It's not that we can do much about it, but yet you need to weigh in on can, can we shape it? So the question became, and I'll leave it with this for you guys to weigh in, because it's an upper hearing authorization, which is, what about in our areas of beautification? And Miguel, you can speak to this, or one of y'all can speak to what happens in historical areas where the poles, I mean, I'm talking about architectural review controls, that type of stuff. What about that? Do we have any say in the types of poles or the types of structures that are put here, please?
Yes, Commissioner, and actually, actually, that's a part of the code. If they replace, if they, if it, if it's a decorative pole in a historical district or something of that nature, then they have to, if we don't want them to attach to our pole, then they have to replace it with something that looks just like that for their use. And that's the same thing for the other poles that would be in the right of way, like if they're wooden poles, we don't want them on them poles, and they're going to put their own pole, they have to, has to match. And also, there's other standards when you get into like a downtown area like the city of Douglasville that would be very prescriptive on where they can actually locate. Now, I do want to add that this ordinance update is actually, this is a Board of Commissioners vote, and it involves the right of way. What we don't have, and we will have to do in November, is actually draft a unified development code that deals with this, that is on private property, and that would have to go through the Board of, the Planning and Zoning Board and the Board of Commissioners vote. But today, this is the code that needs to be in place for us to have it by October first to address this.
Okay. Ron, I notice this is a federal mandate. We talked about, we discussed this in our Transportation Committee, but certainly we wanted to make sure we reiterate with those providers that we are looking for uniformity so it will impact. So hopefully, it will not impact our beautification plan, keep things in order around here. So you showed us several types, but you know, with various, if you have three providers, do they have all different types of equipments, or are they uniform and just maybe have a label that says AT&amp;T or whoever?
Ma'am Chair, I'm not really sure what their specific equipment looks like. Phil was kind enough to pull some of these examples off the internet, and that's all we had, really. But I don't know what the, what the specific providers would look like.
Just wanted to see if there could be some exclusivity for us, and just make sure that if they order one particular brand, if you just make sure all of them look alike for Douglas County perhaps.
That's a very good thought.
Still, being from a different company or provider.
For uniformity.
Yeah.
Sure.
That's, all right, thank you. Commissioner Maguire has something for you, Ron.
Okay.
Okay, so you're saying that although we have poles out there, they, they can put new poles in, shorter poles?
Um, well, I mean, that's the-
And then run the wire, the fiber, whatever, copper, from pole to pole. So, and they're not long distance away from each other?
No, ma'am, I mean, the two providers that came in, one of them met with James and I and Phil, and then another one came in and met with Phil, and I think Miguel was there that day, but they, they didn't really have any things specific on, well, they have, they have requirements of distances. I think it was like four hundred feet.
What's that?
Um, seven feet.
That's not that far. That's a block.
It's, it's, it's not that far. And, and so when they, at, at, right now, what we're doing is, we're preparing for them, if they come back in and we are able to get this on the books and we have some, some ways to kind of control a little bit of how, how that corridor looks like.
Well, can the poles be used for other purposes, like a light being put on top of the pole, dual use?
I mean, the, the legislation is really meant to encourage collaboration between the providers, but they don't seem interested in doing that. So I mean, they're basically-
What about us and, you know, the county and them? Can we say, well, can we put a light on this pole because we need to lighten up that area? I'm asking.
I don't, I don't know. That'd be a good Miguel question. I know that there's part of, we asked the discussion staff-
And another part that I'm concerned with is the wires underneath there, because Miguel, you recall at the post-road ridge, the reason we couldn't put a guardrail up was because of all the wires up under there. So we've got to be careful that we protect, you know, safety measures that we would have to going down the road, but maybe have it as close to the pavement as possible so that...
Well, some of the, some of the requirements that the technology is going to necessitate, they're going to have to be at a certain minimum height, so they can't be too close to the ground. It's almost, the, the old system, the 4G system had very high towers, and they were able to broadcast the signal a long distance. These are much lower to the ground. They're supposed to have overlapping coverage, because one of the benefits of the 5G is the ability to interact, communicate with autonomous vehicles. So the signals that are required for, for that navigation is, this is what's supposed to do it. So it has to be close to the ground. It generally wants to be along corridors, because that's where the greatest need is going to be. But it's interesting to your question, can we have, and to Madam Chair's question about can we have some sort of uniformity? The legislation itself, when it got to that issue, they punted on it, they essentially said, rather than define, it says it can't be any high, any more than seventy cubic feet of volume. So they, they didn't even go to the issue of, they should be, you know, cylindrical, similar to the others, none of that. When we met with the providers, the two, at least I met with one of them, when we spoke to them in terms of can you cohabitate with the other provider? If they come in and they have a corridor, can you go on the same pole? The response was absolutely not. It will interfere with their signal. So from the legislative standpoint, they have, they have freedom to design these things in whatever fashion. Obviously, they can't be too objectionable, because then we run into different issues, but, I mean, they could be cylindrical. Most of the ones that I've seen are cylindrical, perhaps eighteen inches high and maybe a foot in diameter, something like that. But they could be cubes, and, and the technology's going to evolve. There's nothing in the legislation that prescribes how they're going to be designed, how they're going to look. It even talks about having not only the cylinder or the cube, if you will, but having antennas that protrude from that. So at this point, we do not have a lot of detail, other than what the legislation that's been passed, and to the extent that we can implement any kind of control, or at least know what they're proposing on, on the right of way, this is the way to do it. But, but they were successful at going from what used to be almost a universal prohibition against these things being the right of way, to almost having it by right, that they can go in there subject to very minimal regulation.
Well, we just have to be real careful about those underground wires, too, that they don't prohibit our maintenance of our roads, and I hope they're not going to tear up our roads when they're installing the wire, like the cable people are doing and stuff like that.
I hope so, too, but I'm afraid that on occasion, that they are going to be like any other utility, because they're-
But they have to be bonded.
They, they, they have to follow our criteria, and they would be responsible for restoration. There is no provision in the statute for them to be bonded as such.
Well, I mean, they should bond to the county that they will repair those roads, if they damage the roads.
Oh, yes.
Just like the pipeline, when they went through, they made them bond.
They are required to do that, and in fact, one thing that the legislation did provide for is if they do not comply with our criteria, that we do not have to issue for permits. So at least there's a bit of a stick as it relates to they have to comply.
And one last question, this is revenue to the county also, like with the permits?
Well, it's, it's, it's intended to be revenue neutral. So the leg, yeah, the legislation essentially said, here's the maximum that you can charge for an application fee or a maintenance fee, meaning for staying attached to the pole, and it's renewed annually, but it is subject to audit, and so we have to have the personnel handling the application reviews, doing the field inspections, and we're going to have to balance the revenue that we collect against those expenditures. So there's no net revenue to the county.
I'll yield back.
Commissioner Parkland, I believe, did you have? Oh, that, that was, that was it. That was going to be my question, because when I sat on the Board of Assessors, we did take a look at going around to assess each one of those cellular poles, because there are a lot of poles out there that we're not going to locate revenue on. And, and just to see if they were actually self-reporting, and there were quite a few that we found were not. So I'd be very interested in, in seeing how many applications you get, because you can have one pole that has about eight nods on it, different provider. I'd just be interested in taking a look at that. And you might want to get with the Board of Assessors, Ron, to, to see what they found when they did that, maybe about two years.
They might have been covered.
Edit it, right. Yeah, so.
But I do. Commissioner Mitchell.
Okay. Let's wrap this all up. So if I'm hearing you correctly, even though I know it's coming down, be fair to the state and everybody else, and kind of what we have to do is just trying to orchestrate some type of makeup of what they do and how they do in Douglas County, Division of Douglas County. But if I heard you correctly, they could actually, each provider could come through and put a pole up. That's going to be interesting. That's going to be extremely interesting. And there's, at this point, I guess we publish it all as a board commissioners, kind of at least talk to our legislators, not that they could do much about it, but to allow that to be that wide open, you know, not to understand if they put, if one provider put up a pole, then everybody can get on that pole, or they get on a tower, or whatever that is, that we kind of, you know, help with the, the infrastructure. Because that's what it sounds like, but, but it doesn't sound like that's the case. So that means if AT&amp;T and whomever else come through, they just put up a pole, they have to be so many hundred feet, and, and addition to the poles that are already there, that just doesn't, that, it just doesn't register to me like that, that our legislators think about that, and make sure that, are we clear that you're telling me that, you know, they can come in and just start polling, putting a pole, polling, putting a poles throughout that?
They are, Commissioner, to your point, they are encouraged under the legislation to actually, as a first line of, as a first approach, to locate on existing poles. That is, that's what the legislation encourages. Now, if that does not work with their infrastructure or their signal or what have you, then that's when they can install a new pole, or if-
And we can't say no.
We cannot say no unless, and I, in my discussions with them, what I asked was, well, the legislation says that, that if, if you want to locate on this corner, and there's a pole across the street, and I want to, rather than where you're wanting to go, I'd rather you, instead of installing a new pole on this corner, go cat a corner on the other side to an existing pole, that that's what I'm going to be looking for. The legislation allows for us to do that. We, we could say within a hundred feet of where they're proposing to locate, we can suggest that they rather locate there. Now, the issue becomes, is that pole functional for their, for their signal and all like that? If the pole does not have the capability structurally to support this canister or view, whatever it might be, then they're allowed to replace that pole with a new pole that can support at that location. So there's, there's a little leeway in us being able to have some suggestions as to where they locate, but there is provision for them to say, no, that does not work with our signal. And what I did ask them was, well, I would be looking for some documentation of coverage that in fact it doesn't work, before I just say, yeah.
This is going to be interesting.
It is.
This is going to be really interesting. Ken, have you had a chance to look at, look this all over?
I have, but this is driven mostly by that department and that law.
But this is-
It's complicated and convoluted, and it's an exercise of control by both the state and the state. Just letting y'all know.
Yeah.
Wow, okay, well, because this, and I'm assuming these, these mini towers pieces will be microwaveable to kind of go travel from one to the other? I don't know if that's the 5G or is it something totally different that what they're after? You know, I, I mean, you hear about the 5G and what they're doing, and what, you know, that's the new wave of technology.
The, the canisters will broadcast the signal, but the canister, I'm, I'm using canisters based on what was shown here, but they could have any configuration. They're going to be connected, so they will all broadcast the signal near simultaneously.
We got it. Wow, okay, all righty. This is, this is, this is not good.
How are we going to cut the roadways?
We, we, we just kind of, they just decide on what they want to do. We just got to accommodate, I guess, from my understanding of what I'm hearing. Or do we write something within our, within our ordinance, irregardless of what they're saying? I mean, the state is mandating, but do we write something in our ordinance that will protect us from fifteen different poles because everybody want to be on that corner? And I'm being over, you know?
Yeah, well, when that's, when that's challenged, one day, they're going to overwrite whatever you write, in my opinion. I don't know what y'all think, but I think when the FCC rules and the state, they're going to overwrite it.
I would agree. I think even the statute has some language in there that says that local municipalities or counties cannot enact, charge different fees or any-
Right.
Higher fees or anything like that, or anything that interferes with their ability to broadcast their signal.
There's a provision in here also that deals with imminent risk to public safety, so at some point, the authorities, if the authorities, the county determined that there was a public safety risk from something that the providers were doing, then we do have the right to ask them to address that risk, wherever that is.
That would be, if they're trying to locate a pole at an intersection and interferes with the site, triangle site distance of vehicle, then we can ask them to locate it somewhere else.
Or if it interferes with our new whole system that we're putting up our radio system, if by chance, that, that stand a chance to say, to fight against this, to say no, because you're going to cause our, an interception with our radio system.
It, it should, to, to, to my knowledge, it should not impact that, because it's a very different frequency.
Well, I, I, I get it, yeah, yeah. That, that's what we anticipate, but until you start dealing with waves, then you'll, you'll know what you're dealing with itself. Okay, I yield back.
Okay, thank you. Well, I was expecting this particular topic to generate quite a bit of discussion about the 5G, so that's why we're so excited to, after the Transportation Committee, Vice Chair, just really need to bring to the board some, just enlighten y'all about this federal and state mandate. We will move on to the next item, which is cap number seven, authorization to approve an agreement with Cone for elevator, elevator maintenance at the Douglas County Law Enforcement Center in the annual amount of nine thousand eight hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents. And authorize Chairman to sign all related documents pending legal review, major homes.
This is the annual contract for Cone, who does the maintenance for our elevators there. It's pretty separate from the other ones, so.
Pretty separate from the other ones, and we'll move on to the next one. Thank you. And the eighth authorization to apply for construction grant from the Georgia Public Libraries Service for a new library on Anna Wakey Road, plenty more. The record has signed.
Good morning. The Chapel Hill Library was originally-
The Chapel Hill Library was originally submitted for consideration in budget year two thousand and six. We're a little bit behind on our schedule for new libraries in the county. This was, is an additional library to support the residents south of I-20 in the eastern part of Douglas County where there's still currently no services. The Chapel Hill Anna Wakey Library would approximately be about thirty thousand square feet. It'd be a two-story library housing, a diverse collection of books and materials. Additionally, the goal is to provide community maker space and enhanced technology, as well as multiple meeting rooms and study spaces. The library would become the main hub of the county libraries and house the library offices. This library is to con- to include outdoor trails and multi-use educational space, maker space technology, including three D printing and various unique features with sewing machines, music production, steam technologies, with future additions to include children's play place, play spaces, splash pad, and a community amphitheater. At this time, we're asking to begin the application process with the state. Our application is due September thirtieth. This is just a very initial application, letting the state know that we are interested in seeking funding. Funding would begin, we would get on, this is Lee Dollar, he knows more about all of this, he's with our regional library.
Okay, I'm Lee Dollar with the West Georgia Regional Library System. And the state funds usually three to five library construction projects a year. And right now, I think there's fifteen to seventeen on the list right now. So this initial phase would be just to get on the list. It's, there's a very simple application to fill out to to be placed on the list. It's a non-binding, kind of letting the state level know that you're interested in a new library. And as it progresses up the list, then things get a little bit more serious as you get closer to getting funded. So really, the the bottom line is, there's a very simple, I think it's like a six or seven page application, not very complicated, which entitles you, when funded, to get two million dollars of state money to go toward your project. That is the limit the state has is two million. And you can withdraw at any time up until you're funded. So it's it's too late to withdraw if you, if the legislature in their session and they leave in April and say, this project is funded, that's kind of where the line is drawn. As long as you withdraw, probably the best thing to do is withdraw before the session begins in the year that you're probably going to get funded. You're looking at it probably as it stands right now, and it's all based on how much influence you have under the golden dome. I've seen projects that were number twenty-one on the list when the list was longer get funded. So it's it's really, it's really politics and who knows who and where and when you want to get funded. Obviously, if this would be on the splotch or something, you wouldn't want to get funded in the next year or two. But it's critical that you get on the list. That is the the major deal. So, you know, I know y'all are looking at a thirty-three thousand square foot library. It'd be substantially more than what the state would provide, but it would be some assistance, two million. And once the two million is turned over to to you guys, as long as it's been on the library construction, y'all have full control of it. The state doesn't necessarily want to have a hand in the construction as far as any day-to-day or any of that kind of stuff. It would be just kind of subject to audit. That would be the only requirement dealing with that now. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to try to ask, answer.
Any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner, Dr.?
Yes, Lyny, do you know how many square feet the Dog River Library has?
Dog River is just under fifteen thousand.
And how much do we want to build?
We're asking for thirty thousand square feet. This is approximately about a ten million dollar facility. It would be a two-story library.
Okay.
I know that we do own the rights, the the plans for the Dog River Library, so that is an option to take that and expand the original plans for Dog River.
We can reduce the size, can we not?
Yes, we can reduce the size of it, given-
We're not locked into that thirty thousand square feet?
No, we are not.
Okay.
There's a formula that the state has for how much library square footage you need per concerned population. And we're way, way behind in where we should be at this point. Our twenty twenty-five estimate is about a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of library. And we're currently just under fifty thousand square feet of library usage for the county. So we're a bit behind in what the state gears as library.
That's a better shape, really.
I'm sorry.
It would help us, yes, to say we are a bit behind. But you're saying that we can actually use the same plans?
That's my understanding from when-
There are going to be a confusion. An architect has to say so about that. But but we could build one. And do you know how much it cost to build that one?
Dog River was four point two million.
So we matched two two million?
We did get the two million match from the state, so the county was out around two point six million, I believe.
Average construction cost for public libraries right now in Georgia is running about two hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot. That includes furnishings and doesn't include material, including books or anything. But for furnishing, furnishings and the actual physical construction of the building is running about two hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot.
When these, when these plans were originated in two thousand and six, it was around two hundred per square foot.
Okay, but we could always build a smaller one and add to it.
We we could. That is an option. We were definitely in need of more space. If we decided not to go through with a new construction project, then our next big focus is the full renovation of the Selman Library. But there's currently no library services in Chapel Hill and Anna Wakey area.
I know we're doing, yeah. All right, I give back.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Parkland?
Yes, so can you give me a little bit more insight on moving up the list? And that two million dollars you said could only be used on construction, right? So so-
It can't be used for land purchase, preliminary drawing. Well, architectural plans, yes, preliminary drawings, no.
And just because you all have experience of this and I don't, so I'm leaning on you. How long would it take to draw down those funds from the state once you're approved? And then from that point to conception of a library?
Once, once you're allocated money, on the first million of state money, it's ninety percent state, ten percent local. And on the second million, it's fifty percent state, fifty percent local. So obviously, as you start drawing down money in your early processes, the state picks up the tab for most of the first million. And then the second million is an equal match. And then beyond that, it's completely local.
And to your point, Lindsay, it would be best to have one in the Chapel Hill and Anna Wakey area as opposed to renovating the Selman?
Yes, the, something in Chapel Hill area, excuse me, Chapel Hill area would definitely relieve some of the pressure from here on Selman and our others as well. Selman is completely overwhelmed because we have nothing in that part of the county. So that would even out some of our our stress, some of the demands that are on the Selman Library. And just bringing more business, more community to the Chapel Hill area would be wonderful. We are still pulling, the libraries are on a statewide system, so we're pulling not just Douglas County residents, but residents from all over the state. That would also help pull more from Cotton-Fulton as well.
When you all did the Dog River Library, you equated how many houses would benefit from that? Is that how you?
I was not involved with the, with that initial, but I'm sure, you know, population had a lot to do with, population doesn't mean a lot to do with how they-
Because I know Chapel Hill area is probably more highly populated than than the Dog River would, which would hence why we do need a bigger facility, a larger, a larger space. Yeah, I'm just trying to make it make sense.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Was that all, yeah?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice chairman, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, so again, Selman Drive, I get it, you know, sort of a likely to, like dearly. We're behind, right? Just like we're parked and wrecked, we're four indoor facilities behind, right? We recognize that, we 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 understand that that goes to libraries as well. We're behind. And we talk about a lot about certain areas not being served, right? So here we are, library, I get it. So what I heard you say, based on you articulate like this, is, it sounds like a multi-purpose facility, right? I heard two stories, I I heard, it's very thoughtful, it goes beyond just a traditional library with books on a shelf. It it has, it's meaning a higher community meaning. Is that true?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And we're interested in involving local businesses.
Right.
One of the products with the Villa Rica Library, when they built their new one a few years ago, they also received local money from local businesses and donors. And that's something we would certainly like to see with some of the newer manufacturing facilities and businesses coming into the county. We would certainly like to see more incorporation of libraries in that, I mean, and businesses into the library with our maker spaces, the technology in the area. We're interested in reaching out and meeting needs of businesses as well as the library patrons.
Right.
Our business, our community room spaces are constantly booked with local businesses and companies that are always looking for a meeting space that they they don't currently have. So that, that's one of the big demands that we have right now is for meeting space that we simply don't have any room to provide that at this time.
Absolutely. We have no executive suites, we have no classic property, we have nothing really out in the west of Atlanta, right? So, I mean, I'm hearing a much bigger need that can be met beyond, it's probably tangential. No, this is good. I mean, I get, get on the list, it's a process, I understand how it works. But I I am encouraged, you know, we talk about libraries and do people, there's something still about a book. There's something still about, it's it's just, it's not just about the book alone in today's library system, but still, there's something about knowledge, about education. And having people come together to solve problems, to to inquire, to expand their mind. I mean, you go on, I mean, I'm probably singing to the choir, but I'm encouraged by this need that they can't, we can't believe that libraries are going to go the way of dinosaurs if you don't have them. Then like, no, we'll be remiss in believing that the library is not core. You know, within a school, you've got to have a library. You know, more within a community, you've got to have a library. And then you start saying that education is no longer important, you want to sort of swipe that to the side. Now you're getting into, yeah, okay, I could never support getting rid of libraries or the need to read and education. And when you don't serve the population, the people who really need it, your your area, your culture, your society, you know, be subject to go to hell. So, well done. I look forward to this coming forward, so.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, I'm sorry, there's more I could really ask. Okay, we'll move on to tab number nine, authorization to fund the twenty nineteen GEP Core Pension Fund at the required slash recommended level of six point eight million dollars and amend it by about one million two hundred fifty-nine thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars. Director Holm?
Yes, ma'am. This was discussed at our mid-year retreat, so I'm just bringing this before y'all for an official vote. We're asking for an official vote. As you know, that our GEP Core retirement contribution, we had budgeted around five point six. And when the actuary study was done, was done at the end of May, we received the results in the first of June, came out to be six point eight million dollars that needs to be contributed to the GEP Core fund. This will, of course, be a budget amendment. And when I looked at sources of revenue, instead of taking from fund balance, we are seeing a trend in our local option sales tax of approximately a hundred thousand dollars a month coming in more than what we projected. Therefore, I'm suggesting or making a recommendation that when we amend the budget, we increase local option sales tax for the amount that we need for the retirement. Also have invited Paul Bates from the GEP Core here, if y'all have any specific questions about the plan. It's a little bit above my knowledge of the plan, if y'all have any questions to that.
Okay. Any questions from the board, Vice chairman, I'm sorry.
Sure, and I'm not on the, on sort of the pension committee or anything like that, so my my questions are just generic in nature. All right, so again, from a, from a budgeting perspective, you know, going back to being consistent, you have recurring and non-recurring events. And so when you're planning, there are certain things that they just, they happen, and we have to properly respond to that. Part of the budgeting process to make sure you have enough, enough elasticity inside your budget to accommodate steps and load, right? This is like one-on-one. So here we are in the budget process, a little bit more than what we we anticipated. But again, it could be higher, it could be lower, and just this time it happens to be higher. My my question then becomes, my my question becomes, all right, you know, take it out of the local option sales tax versus the fund balance, but doesn't really matter, you know, it's how you frame it. Okay. Is there any, any reason why this year is a little bit higher or is it just normal, right? In other words, it's an ebb and flow, not that I'm concerned, because again, we've we've had times where it was less. And that's my first question, that's more, Paul can kind of answer that. But when you talked about sources, one of the things we did in amendment really this year, we we amended our budget to account, when we got the TANs in there, we left two million on the table for cash. We're using for CSV, we use it for DOT projects, and we also said other things that finance may need. Does that have any factor in this or we're just choosing not to use that as a source? We're just going to let that cash go back?
Yeah, this is strictly-
We talked about that publicly, so I need to-
Sure.
Tie it off.
The TANs is strictly cash flow, it's just strictly a balance sheet transaction. So it's strictly just cash coming into the account. Where this right here is actually a expenditure, so an income statement per se, transaction that we need to increase our expenditures for the retirement contribution from the original five point six to the six point eight.
I just made a statement publicly, right, that we're going to use that cash in event we we had, right, to float ourselves to the end for property tax, everything coming in, of course, to pay. I don't know, Washington Tax Taxes coming in, such a way that, ooh, we're okay, we can relieve the pressure, keep a normal roster. That, get along going, the revenues came in more than we wanted to, so we didn't have to use this loan to pay our bills.
Correct.
Our revenue came in stronger, so I just-
That is correct.
Because we made a, we made a, an amendment, we passed something, we passed something earlier this year. We used the TANs, we made an amendment, use cash a certain way. So I just want to make sure that the public understand that we're not going to use that option now, and that goes away. Is that correct?
That is correct. And then any funds, of course, that we don't use, we just go back, we pay the loan, the TAN off hopefully this year, just like we have past two years early on that third one. But this will, this right here is just the expenditure side of the equation versus the cash.
I just want to tie it together, you know, somebody sometimes is paying attention, they'll say, but you guys said we're good.
Okay, thank you so much, question. All right, you have a question? I think we're good. All right. We'll move on to tab number ten, authorization to intentional professional services contract with Artifacts LLC to provide architectural and structural design services for the Douglas County Fire Department Training and Storage Facility and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director P. Cox?
Yes, ma'am. Back in March of this year, we received bids in for the construction of the new storage building at the CFD Training Complex. Those prices were more than we had available to spend. So we took the opportunity to go back and look at the structure and find ways to save money. In doing that, we need a professional firm to come in and work with us now on the art re- the architectural redesign and engineering for this proposed building. Artifacts is the company that's been working with us for several months as we've gone through this process. They've offered to, again, provide the draw- this process, they've offered to, again, provide the drawings and the services to the fire department for an amount totaling ten thousand five hundred dollars. The fire department is recommending that, that this agreement be signed with Artifacts.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay, I'll move on to the next item, tab number eleven, approval of mending of the amending purchasing card and credit card policy, purchasing card and or credit card user agreement, Douglas County travel policy and procedures, manual and the Douglas County Board of Appointment Policy, Legal Department.
Yeah, Madam Chair, yeah, Madam Chair, at your request, and for board members, the Madam Chair asked us to review the purchasing card, credit card policy, the purchasing user agreement, purch, excuse me, credit card user agreement, and the travel policies, I'm gonna deal with those three first and separate those from board appointment policy. And essentially, we went through and tried to make uniform those three, most of the verb, it's ninety-five percent of it's the same, but I wanna point out what's probably a little bit upgrading. The county purchasing cards, credit cards shall not be used for the purchase of items of a personal use, county purchasing cards and credit cards should not be used for cash refunds or advances, county purchasing cards and credit cards should not be used for purchase of items specifically restricted by its policy unless a special exemption is granted by the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. County purchasing cards and credit cards should not be used for the purchase of alcohol, alcohol-related products, tobacco, tobacco-related products, electronic cigarettes or electronic cigarette-related products, products or other similar items. County purchasing cards and credit cards shall not be used for the purchase of goods serviced or approved budget, approved by the county, county purchasing credit cards shall not be used, or that's just terminology, for anything in violation of Georgia law. Now, what happened with the, you got the, you got the travel policy that mentions the Board of Commissioners, but more or less talks about employees, we've brought those two together, so treats everybody that's getting reimbursed under Douglas County policy as wanting the same for purpose of that, whether you're elected official, whether you are employee, or whether you're a designated agent to use a credit card, and I don't think there are that many. The other part it does is, we're getting into the circumstance where state by state is saying some things are legal and some things aren't legal, we're at a conference in Colorado, is buying a marijuana cigarette legal or not, we're trying to avoid all that by just simply saying you can't buy items for a personal use that aren't related to the travel reimbursement policy, you get, you know, your food paid for, obviously, if you're on an approved thing, you get your travel, your accommodations, but things outside of that are purely personal nature, you don't get paid for, or if it's something that would violate Georgia law, among other things. The, I thought that the three policies related to that had detract changes, I've sent all of y'all an email, so that y'all can actually look at the red line, what was changed, so you'll know, okay, I apologize, we, when Stephanie sent this over, she sent the clean version over, but I've now sent, sent y'all, so you have in your email box the actual red line of each, everything that was changed, so you know what was changed, and you'll see most of it is still the same, there's some clarification, there's some this and that and yonder, but essentially, this driven by the Chair asked me to, or us, legal, to clean up those policies and make them more uniform, and so we've done that with the Chair's blessing. So that's what you have before you, and secondarily, and I might need Lisa a little bit more on this, the Douglas County Board Appointment Policy was more driven by, y'all asked the county clerk to put something down, what your policies are, and Lisa, I'll help you, but if I miss something, you please tell me, because I may miss something else. In my review of this, essentially what it does is it puts a timeframe that you have to leave appointments open, I believe, at least fourteen days, I think that you solicit from the public as a whole, if there is no applicant for a particular job, doesn't mean that just cause there's one applicant, you have to choose them, by the way, just saying it's the way you create a pool of people to get jobs. If there is no applicant, then the board or a board member can suggest somebody, outside groups can suggest somebody, et cetera, but ultimately, it's still within y'all's discretion to get some permitted. So that policy, and Lisa, you wanna talk more about that, cause Lisa worked hard on that, and I think, and.
Yeah, just basically, we, it's stating that we're going to advertise for all open positions on boards. You know, there are still some that are district-driven, you know, you pick who you would like to serve in your district, but we'll still follow the same process, we'll still advertise, and y'all have a bigger pool to choose from.
And you still, you know, you'd still have discussions in executive session, mainly not hurting or embarrassing anybody, but the vote still has to occur publicly, so we read it, we're fine with it, it's more generated by what Lisa understands y'all's practice to be, and to open up the idea that there's gonna be a timeframe for a window to be opened in the advertising process and receipt, receipt of candidates. Madam Chair, we can address any of those with Lisa's help.
Okay. Commissioners, you okay?
Yeah, I, I, there's a lot of policy to be pushed in one vote, they're not necessarily related, but, but, okay, I get the point. On the board appointments, this, I'm taking it reverse, should, the question comes, should to get proper representation from the county, I've always been of the position that appointment should come out of the districts. Some of the boards, you have CD County, there's a lot of old politics that has evolved forward, I just think that, 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 in my opinion, each board should be district-based. Now, there may be some legislation that we may have to overcome to make that comport, but I, you know, it's just one of those where, and you just watch how the appointments go, just like, oh, every, every district has a certain view, and, and it, it's just something, it's no different than congressional, or the senate, it's, it's important, right? When you have a concentration of just inside appointments that, that is not, at least has a district orientation, it just becomes, hmm, it gets highly concentrated, and so I, I just, I, I, so, I'm not saying that I would, it's something to talk about, so that one, when you talk about board appointments, it's not just about our window of time in which you respond, the question is, who gets to get on the board and where they pull from? All right? I think that's important, so you, you leave your, this is to my colleagues, you leave your voice on the table when you don't advocate for your district at least have representation on each board. It's okay if you don't wanna think this is worthy of picking it up. My bad.
I'm sorry.
I treated something wrong. No, that was, I guess I need to let off, okay, my bad, that was, actually, that was good, anyway, you get my point. Yeah, no, no, it's okay. But I, I was about this, it's something to think about, I mean, again, the time I've been here, we've always had this internal conversation about board appointments, right? You, you hear commentary about political appointees and this, that, and the other, nah, I get it, so here we are, guys, we're supposed to be creating legislation, let's, should this be revisited at this time, where we make a push for each, I mean, now, the challenge we do have, now, even in making that statement, now, for the public to hear this, y'all don't apply. Y'all busy, y'all do different things, it's usually the same people looking to get on with one single board, and it's really not, so I'm balancing it, so my peers know that, like, no, we, we sit here, like, where are they at, are y'all ready, are y'all ready, are y'all board appointment ready? So it's a balancing act between us desiring to appoint people, and we gotta go, like, okay, is anybody, I mean, who applied? You know, right? The county clerk, has anybody applied? No, 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 and then we're sitting here having to scramble, calling people, can anybody be appointed? So that's important, when sometimes you hit the political appointee thing, well, if at large, nobody's responding, well, we gotta appoint somebody to the board, so you gotta have a balancing act with that, so, I'm just putting it out there, it's just something that we want to take up now, I don't think it's worth stopping, cause you always amend legislation on and on and on, but at least for now, I'm okay with the window of time to, to sort of leave something open, but I'm, I'm still, I think it's warranted, if not all the boards or committees, at least some of them should be looked at to make sure that they're district-specific, that local voice matters, so, I'll leave it at that, it was just commentary.
Yeah, and I will say this, on this, and y'all will see this, look, you probably can see it now, I don't think there's any comments about the methodology as far as districts or not, it's more the pool, and y'all, that, that may be something y'all want to discuss, Commissioner Robinson, cause I don't know.
Yeah.
I think the history is more, there's been some informal, all right, you get an appointment, you get an appointment, the chair has a point, whoever, as opposed to, I don't know that there's anything actually documented that requires it, so y'all really drive that ship, however y'all wanna drive it.
That one's important, I'm, I'm okay with the other policies, Madam Chair, that one I would like to at least, can we separate the two in the vote?
Right, but, but also, I don't want it to just be district-specific, you need at large some input as well, and that kinda pushes me to the side a lot, allow me to have a voice in any one, so with that being said, you need to make sure that at large has a voice.
Well, on this particular policy, if y'all were to approve it, this is only the methodology and procedure of attracting candidates.
Right.
This does not specifically address, they gotta come from a district, or they gotta come from at large, that's, that may, and I don't think we actually have a formal rule, do we, that's just one that in the past, here's what they've done, and that's what we picked up, I don't know that there's any formality.
The animal, I know the animal control board that.
Some of them.
That does.
Some of them may be specific in their legislation.
Planning and sounding, I think.
They are.
They used, it used to be documented that they were, but I don't think it has to be any longer, we've just always followed those procedures.
So, again, just for the sake of being consistent, bringing things forward, just like we're reforming these, you know, bringing them forward, we'd like to put, to Madam Chair's point, I didn't want to separate, I wanted to separate the two, so I thought that was big enough for us to take it offline, but I'm okay with, your point was, make sure we had a window of time, that was appropriate, speak your part, no problem with that, my other point on the other ones, this is Jennifer Hallman, we talked about in finance, and I just don't remember what, what, what we talked about as relates to travel, we've gotten comments from employees, and just, just things we've activated over time as relates to the thirty-five dollar per diem, we talked about this in finance, I at least wanted this to be on record, what was the amount that we sort of came to, I, I think I said let it go up, how do we handle that?
I believe that's something that's gonna be brought up in the finance committee, it was gonna be today, but, but this lost in the travel policy, I moved it tomorrow at eight-thirty because Mark had a funeral, but in the conversation, the question, I believe, was fifty dollars a day.
Fifty, or fifty-five, it was tied to the federal.
Yes.
Was it fifty?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five?
Fifty-five.
Yeah.
Can you just confirm for us?
Sure, sure.
So, I wouldn't want that to sort of be, to not be addressed as well, since we talked about it in finance, and we all picked up as a recommendation to the full board, is there a way that we can, I mean, so what are you saying, are we taping this? When you say it was gonna come up in finance, but now we're not, what are you saying?
No, it was, it's gonna come up at the finance committee that we have scheduled, the special call meetings scheduled tomorrow at eight-thirty.
So, Jennifer, is that a policy, that we have a reimbursement policy that's separate from all this, as actual schedule of what you can get, per diems and all that, I think we're commissioners, asking if the finance committee were to recommend changes to that, that would be separate from these three groups of things that are on the agenda right now.
Correct.
Because the schedule, this doesn't, this has caps on credit cards, but it doesn't have the actual schedule, here's what your per diem for travel is, here's what your mileage is, is that a separate policy that y'all have, that y'all could present in the new business tomorrow, to be taken up, if that's gonna be a recommendation of finance, or what?
It's part of the travel policy that's, that's on here.
Is actually in, the actual numbers are in here?
Yeah, and, yeah, in the travel policy, the number you're in.
Okay, I didn't realize the numbers were, I apologize.
But Mark had suggested that we bring it up in for discussion with the finance committee.
Okay.
Well, it'll be tomorrow, that's lost and the travel policy will be tomorrow, cause Mark won't be here, he wants to be here for that, that is.
Curiously, Madam Chair, can I just hold off on that until the finance committee, we're fine, let's wait till tomorrow, then whatever comes out of that to the broader group, we'll bring forth, this is a recommendation, so we wanna leave it as is right now, and whatever comes out of finance, will you guys be willing to, to hear it, or what? I heard no.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go back, I made my point, so, I'm, I'm good, I mean, I made my point, so, yeah, go.
Okay, and also, Jennifer, you were working on budget impact, to see exactly what happened, what changed those numbers, did you ever get that information out to us?
I believe Jessica was pulling all the sheets, I'll check them first.
Just, just, you just projected.
Sure.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, there's one other thing I probably need to mention, on the, somewhere in here, I think it's the credit card user, or credit card policy, we have a list of people who are approved as of the date of this, and it's under section eight, and it's, it's at the end, it's, it's not complete, the list that's on here does not take into account the changes that y'all made recently, when you opened up the other local elected officials, and from Mark, the county, here's what I believe, I believe that there is, Mark has a credit card, the county administrator, the county clerk has a credit card, and Matt Laverne has a credit card, I'm not aware of anybody else besides local government, local elected officials and board eligible folks, do y'all know of anybody else besides those?
Fire Department.
The Fire Department.
We probably need to get that list, so I can make sure that section eight is correct, because at the time, I didn't know who the other people were.
Okay, so you're working on that?
Yeah, and we have that from Mark.
Okay, please.
Yeah, and, and again, thank you, it just seems like these are, we're, we're fast-tracking four policies, and we're trying to get them aligned, I'm trying to be sensitive to, should we table?
Yes.
And the only reason I'm asking, maybe not all of them, more specifically the travel one, because it's something that we have, at least that, the per diem we talked about in a prior finance committee.
Did you found out?
Okay, so we talked about it, so it's not like it's a new recommendation that we gotta revisit that, my point is, that should be incorporated in this, that's my first point, and it was already talked about, all right, Lisa made a recommendation.
I can make, you can erase exactly what the minutes say?
No, we're good, no, no, I, I don't wanna belabor it, but, but you will, but that one, just, just that one table to make sure we're aligned, I'm okay with the other ones, you gotta clean up the legislation, y'all should have, I mean, I got what Ken was doing as far as the legislative, and, and then the last one, which was about the board appointment, that's what I'm saying, these are four different things, I'm like, okay, wait, what did I just hear? So, the travel, I would like to see that one table, until we can really think about that one, the other ones I'm okay with, and then I'll let y'all talk about the board appointments, but, I mean, we're trying to tackle all four of these at the same time, they're big issues, though, we're handling them like they're just small administrative actions, it's like, okay, y'all know what we're about to do here, so if you're gonna open this up, do it right, don't, don't just slip this through, you gotta window of time to clean this up and make it meaningful as it relates to legislation else, okay.
Madam Chair, based on Commissioner Robinson's comments, if y'all are inclined, I would probably table all three of them, because between, between y'all, they're so interrelated, that if we pass two of them, and don't pass or amend the third one, it may not make any sense in the books. So, I, I, y'all can administratively table this now if you want to, take it off and put on in two weeks, and we'll get it cleaned up between then, if you want to.
We'll, we'll take it off, we'll take it off, all right, now, just give us a little more time to clean it up.
Do y'all also want to address the appointment policy now, or you want it to have?
Take them off, too, just take them all off, clean them up and make them separate as we present them, you know, I think one would be bundled, bundled, the credit cards, the travel and all that, and then allow them.
Two different, okay, and we would ask, when you see your track versions, if you have any comments, let us know, please.
Okay.
Cause I've sent y'all emails with the track versions, and I'll clean up the section eight about who's actually got a credit card, and we'll get with Jennifer Hallman, Jennifer Moore will get with Jennifer to make sure we have the right reimbursement schedule that's being proposed, and it'll be tracked, so you can see it as well, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have two items left, ones twelve and thirteen, it seems we can press it up, we can rather talk about those, tab number twelve is authorization to award a contractor summit construction and development LLC in the amount of six hundred sixty-three thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars and eighty cents for the construction of Doris Road and Sweetwater Church Road in the section improvement project to be funded from the twenty sixteen Sloss funds with a fifty percent of a total cost contribution from Palton County through a previously approved memorandum of agreement, and authorize chairman to sign all related documents, Director Valentine. to be funded from the twenty-sixteen SLOST funds with a fifty percent of a total cost contribution from Paulding County through a previously approved memorandum of agreement, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents, Director Valentine.
Yes, Madam Chair, we are ready to move into construction award, the project was bid, we are recommending that the low bidder be awarded the contract, they are properly certified to handle this type of project. And so we're ready to move forward upon approval by the board.
Okay, any questions from the board? This is a recommendation coming from transportation.
Yes, this item was reviewed by the transportation committee, they made a recommendation for approval.
We'll move on to tab number thirteen, authorization to approve a construction funding agreement with G.D. in connection with the Maxim Road Improvement Project P one zero zero one two six two one, to facilitate the commitment of federal funds, and allow G.D. to reimburse the county up to two million two hundred eighty thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars and sixty-four cents of project construction costs, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents.
Yes, this one is the funding agreement, we have identified the low bidder on the project, who is recommended to get the award once we are ready to do that. This agreement would have to go back to G.D. for them to execute, then they will send us a notice to proceed to award the project, and we would be back before the board with an award to the low bidder at that time.
Okay, any questions from the board? And you can see that this particular, this two meetings broken up in increments, and can you talk about those various tiers, federal, various dollars are coming from?
Yes, this was a project that was expected, or the estimate originally was two-point-four million, and it came in at two-point-eight million, and so typically, the local agency will have to come up with a difference. This is one where we appealed, filed a request for additional funding with G.D., and they ran it up to Federal Highway, and they were able to grant us the additional funding, so they are covering eighty percent of the cost. So, that eliminated the exposure that the county had for almost half a million.
Thank you, any questions from the board? We'll move on to tab number eighteen, I've already discussed the approval of expenses for Morris, discussion item, proposed annexation by the city of Riverside West and Two, and it says Bob Arnold, Tray Lane, Preston Boulevard, Ron Roberts.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, this is, this is something that planning and zoning deals with from time to time, we do get annexation requests, but we've never, you know, either I individually go to the commissioners, or I just wait and see if there's anybody that's gonna weigh in, or has an objection to it, and so we've kind of, I just, this is an effort to formalize the process when we get an annexation request. So, put on here is a discussion item, and included a report in your packet that outlines where the location is. Okay, alright, well, I'll just speak to it, then you have the maps in your, should be in Civic Clerk, but the address is actually, were there parcels that are off Riverside Drive? And River Road and Sumer?
Lake.
Yeah. It's a hundred and thirty-four acres, one application, the proposed design is to go to light industrial, it's currently light industrial, so there's no real conflict from the zoning standpoint there. We also have an application on Preston Boulevard with access to Tray Lane, it's currently light industrial, and it's going to be annexed into the city as a multifamily apartments. Yeah, so I just want to make sure, our response, if we don't, if there's no objection to the annexations, is to, because it's such a tight timetable, we get, prepare a letter to get it back to the city.
But you said county, I heard you said county, there's a mistake, if you could just clarify.
Yeah, I just want to hear, alright, so these are two separate things, right?
Right.
Alright, so the first annex, let's take them reverse, the multifamily.
Yes, forty-one point three acres.
Yep, how many units roughly?
Ten units per acre, if it goes into the city.
Yep. So, that's Tray Lane, that's, okay, that's a lot, you gotta put multifamily up there with all those trucks, huh, all that congestion.
Well, that's one thing we were talking about with staff commissioners, Bill was actually over at the city when they were pulling the zoning for this, and we know that the residents in that area were concerned about it going light industrial, and having traffic, and I don't know if that's what precipitated the annexation, or what, but they, the residents in the area preferred the multifamily, apparently.
I get it, but if multifamily is going in there against all the, and my point, again, I get their annexation, so, alright, put that to the side, I mean, this, I'm hearing this, I appreciate the discussion, this is good, thank you, Ron. The other one about Riverside, now where's that at, where, go back to the map, go back, Riverside? That's further down.
Right.
You have to take River Road by Gordon Foods to get to it.
Yep.
The parcel's all in here, all in the woods.
Back up over there, alright, so they want to put more multi, I mean, excuse me, light industrial?
Yes.
Hundred and thirty-some odd acres?
Hundred and thirty-four acres.
Yep, what can you put on a hundred and thirty-four acres, another million square feet?
I'm not sure what they mean.
Probably multiple, probably multiples.
It's huge, but that's appropriate, but they're annexing our light industrial into the city?
That's correct.
Grabbing that cash, I get it, like, I still challenge the thought that, again, all we do is light industrial, I get the cash that provides, guys, it's like, okay, there's no class, it's just more of the same. Like, it's density, as much as we talk about, and go back to District Two, but despite, look at this, it's density, right, and so while it does generate cash, it does add to the, add to the digest, per se, because of the cash that comes in, it's not diversified. And all we're doing is putting volume, you're putting people, and you're putting trucks, it is what it is, but, and so it has a right to make a claim against that cash in this area, but at the same point, like, oh, more density. Now, again, the city is taking this, so again, I understand, Commissioner, you know, you're ex-city council, so they have that power, but it just, my objection is just, it's just, my only objection is, you can't come up with anything else, and I know it's already planned for that, I get it, but I have a problem with them like that. I'm a no, excuse me, on, I'm just no for the fact of, that's enough. At some point, you gotta know when's enough enough, where you can begin to add and be creative, you can take that light industrial and repurpose it, and put other stuff out there, but it's more of the same, so at some point, in the broader, I'm like, for the sake of just, I get it, I just think that that's enough. And at some point, you put more, you just freeze, like, okay, go do something else, there'll be nothing but trucks over there, and at some point, it's gonna get built out, so don't get me wrong, District Two is about to be built out, you're gonna have to go west anywhere, I mean, to grow, you're gonna have to go west. So, I'm less concerned with, and so I'm just decelerating just enough, or at least to make the commentary pause, like, okay, guys, can you top this off by doing something a little bit different? Can you be more, or is it just more of, well, this is what's at hand, let's go ahead and just take it, and I get it, don't get me wrong, so it's more of a, the city's the city, and we're the county, and so my voice is just what it is, but I, I would object to it, it's not that I can stop it, but I can still object, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner, go ahead.
Yes, do you have a map that shows its proximity to Sweetwater Park? The, the houses.
The houses, I mean, that's Sweetwater Park right over here.
No, not that, the other, Tray Lane.
It's the same. It's that, it's just to the west and south, that's the park right there. This is where they're talking, that's where they're talking about.
Where's the traffic gonna go from that subdivision?
Preston Boulevard to Bob Arnold to...
Is that not a truck entry in that area?
Yeah, that's why the residents, that's why all of these residents were up in arms about us having light industrial in the county, and putting another million square feet of light industrial truck traffic on their residential road.
But this is a multifamily project?
This'll now be a multifamily, it's already light industrial, he has all the permissions he needs to build another million square foot of light industrial.
Once he wants to annex.
So he can build apartments at ten units an acre. When the city rewrote the code for the city, they added a planned residential district to the city code, that allowed for unlimited residential development of some quality, you bring a project, and we will give you a density, and they negotiated a density of ten units an acre.
But a lot of that is already, is...
Is what?
Is heavy commercial, is it not? Was this playing the...
Up here is commercial, I mean, that's Thornton Road, and that's your main commercial corridor.
Yeah, and so we're, we're creating another Sweetwater. You know, where the subdivision was behind all the heavier, the warehousing area, and they were complaining about, they couldn't get in and out of their subdivision, and this, that, and the other, is this not creating another situation?
Well, it's not anything you're creating, it's what they would like to create within the city limits.
I know, but I don't know whether, if we say no, what happens?
Objection to an annexation, there's a process that goes in place, and there's, this is pretty, I mean, I talked to Mark about this, there's a guideline here, I'll just read him real quick, the proposed change in zoning or land use, is it, you know, is it a conflict? It's not, proposed increase in density, infrastructure demands, are there infrastructure demands that are gonna be, that are gonna be put on the county?
Well, I think it's gonna create more traffic problems, and that we're gonna have to address down the road, just like we had to do when they built the subdivision back there in the other apartments.
Okay, well, I mean, there's a process, we have thirty days from the receipt of the letter which got here Friday, to object, and if that's, if that's something that y'all want to do, then we would draft a letter for DCA. They have to accept our reasons, and it has to be, you know, it has to have, has to be couched to one of these objections.
But that area right now has its own, in the county.
The area is all city, this is the city zoning, everything that these folks will be driving through is within the city limits.
But they're wanting to annex.
Right, that's, that's down here, and what you have is one small connection to Tray Lane, and then everything else, including this upper blue piece, which is part of his property, is in the city already. So he's asking to annex a portion, a small portion of this piece right here, seven oh nine, to attach it to that and build apartments.
So the one, the brown area, is that?
The brown area is much higher density residential within the city, this is all city, all of this is city.
Even the brown?
Even the brown, your county zoning, well, the county zoning is below it, I separated the map, so you...
Okay, I thought you were saying that they wanted to annex that brown area, you're not saying that.
Yeah, this is what they wish to annex, just this blue and white striped area, this is already in the city.
Okay.
All of the residential density you're talking about is already in the city, and this is also in the city, which is part of what he already owns as well. So, when you look at the property, there's a small connection to Tray Lane, it was gonna be three hundred or so apartments, they're gonna exit with a main entrance off Preston Boulevard, they're gonna use Blair's Bridge, obviously, or Bob Arnold to get over to Thornton, so that's their travel lanes, that's their travel path. The fact that these folks here are probably madder than Dickens at what got built up here, which is a million square feet of light industrial, and so they would prefer to have residential apartments, that's what I kept hearing when I worked at the city. They'd rather have apartments in here than tractor trailers on Preston Boulevard.
Yep.
That's the main deal for them, but you, you know, this is our zoning, so what you're looking at is light industrial already, this is still within the county, the only thing that's leaving is this piece up here, they still own that piece.
All of the light blue?
Yeah, they, well, they don't, not this owner does not own all of this, but this is all light industrial, all of this, and all that's leaving is just this small piece up here, the forty acres or so at the top. And they're gonna, we're just swapping it out, multifamily for light industrial, the kinds of impacts are, it's not the same truck traffic and car traffic, but it's about the same impact if you start to look at the volume of what it is, or the weights of what it is.
Alright, it feels better now, since you've explained it.
So, so the problem is, that portion that you're speaking of, that's, that portion, is it that we don't have a ten units per acre, per that?
No, there's six.
Right, so if by chance that was the case, then the possibility of this being annexed, or then we can do it in the county, would...
Well, here's the deal, so what you need to understand on annexation, why this is attractive, is because he gets to pick the zone district it goes into when enters the city, you'd have to rezone this property from light industrial to be able to do multifamily.
I get it.
So now there's another process.
And the whole re-annex, annexation laws have changed, and I don't know, Kim, you know, you guys can kind of talk to that, because it's kind of, the process is totally different than what it used to be, so objecting...
Yeah, yeah, let me jump on that, Commissioner, because, you know, the DCA will put together an arbitration panel, we objected, and they accept our reasons for the objection. But they really can't stop the annexation anyways. The most they can do is apply zoning or land use or development restrictions to this land, which are only good for one year anyways, so that's, that's, that's what takes place there, so...
Yeah, let me jump on that, the way that law is written is very pro-city, it's pro-city, the way you go around it typically, other than you can object and they'll tie it up, is you need to negotiate with the city, or you negotiate with the land, the applicant, to try to avoid it. And sometimes the applicant withdraws, it can't be annexed, if they withdraw by a certain period of time, but that's really, so when you object to an annexation, you really need to look at doing the other piece simultaneously, because all you're doing is slowing down the process, ultimately...
Not stopping it, however, so going back to my initial thought, and I'm just really saying, if the commissioners are gonna say, if you're interested, then we need to look at our zoning, at the ten acre, I mean, ten units per acre, at the density, to decide on the annexation, because the likelihood of that annexation being stopped is slim to none. Only thing you're doing is, as Kim stated, you can slow it up, but you probably won't stop it.
And you only have had some input in that, because you have a comprehensive plan, the city and county's comprehensive plan sort of identifies this area as a workforce center, a workplace center, or a commerce center, so you have anticipated a density going on there.
And I would say this too, though, if that portion that we just talked about is gonna be possibly annexed, you could probably go down, and you'll probably see now that the other portion down the road, not the one that's light industrial and hard blue, but the line out portion could be another possibility of some form of annexation, and not the hard blue as well, you know, to try to build out what the city's trying to get out. And I do understand, there's a double taxation in all of this too, though, so it ain't like, you know, they clearly get around no taxes through the county, it's just that they'll pay double tax, but I think if we make the adjustment to keep it within the county, then we'll have to look at our own ordinance, our zoning, rather than how it is, our zoning, to look at that possible ten unit, because I don't think he or she, whomever this is, would make any, would make that annexation happen if we had the zoning that he or she just created. That the city is all willing, all in to kind of deal with, and it sound like the community is all for it, and our zoning is light industrial, is what they're not in favor of.
Correct.
So, and, and I'm, and I'm not saying to make the change, I'm only saying, you know, just food for thought, you know?
Yeah, I want to say, and you may be able to, since you worked at the city for a period of time, I think that subdivision filed suit, wasn't there some litigation over this?
Yes, well...
Yeah, somebody filed suit in this area related to something.
Yeah, well, the, originally, this was going to be, it was going to look a lot like what you see here, was going to be multiple buildings, and the truck traffic from this side, which is a huge building, maybe 900,000 square foot building, is what's generating the traffic. They filed suit against those folks for that traffic problem and a number of other issues, but this, this is there. I mean, the truck traffic coming off of that warehouse is huge.
Correct.
And the only reason why I pointed that out, Commissioner, was Randy Halsey, McGill's predecessor, had to testify in that case, he was subpoenaed and given deposition, and a couple, maybe your predecessor, Ron, also. So we're on record with something, I think, I don't know what we're on record with, but it's been a while, it's been a couple of years ago.
Well, I just want to make that, you know, so, so at least this commission would understand.
They do, we know it, because after all, that could be a unified, unified development code change that we could talk about later as we're doing our audit and our rewrite of the code itself, as well, in next year.
Right, right, so, okay. I, I agree.
One question. You know, all that was in the city, and it was for manufacturing and industrial, and the infrastructure was placed in there for that purpose, and now they're deviating from that purpose. It doesn't seem right. Of course, this is the property owner that's requesting this, they have, the property owner has to request the annexation.
Right, yeah. And he had, when he came to the city last year when I was the administrator, he had some sort of issue with his title, that, which is part of the city, which is, gave the property itself could not be modified, it had to go light industrial. There was some procedure they had to go through with their title and ownership interest to rid themselves of covenants that forbid it from being transferred from light industrial to residential.
Well, my, my biggest problem is the traffic. They're already complaining about traffic, you're going to put all these, they, they're complaining about tractor trailers, but you're thinking about two houses, I mean, two cars per house.
Yeah, it's another...
In a residential area, at least, you know, it seems like it's going to make it worse. And then they're going to come to us and say, y'all got to do something about this road, because it's, we can't get in and out of our subdivision, that's what's going to happen. Can we not put a stipulation that they have to do?
It's not city property right now.
Right.
I mean, what's going to happen is if it gets annexed, it's all going to be a city traffic study, and they'll identify what has to happen. Just so you can feel a little more comfortable, two of the things that, what, what I had told them originally on this project was, first off, you have to use this little leg, this black hole, to get to Tray Lane, there has to be two entrances to this.
For Tray Lane and the warehouse.
I know, it's mostly warehouses, but it'll be a secondary entrance for the apartment complex. So there'll be a gated entrance on that side, and the main entrance will be off Preston Boulevard. It's, it's 300 apartments, or it's 8 square feet of tractor trailers?
Water. Water.
They're going to have people in.
I know it, but that's, the whole area was planned to be industrial, the whole thing, and that went on for a decade, uh, two decades.
Okay. I agree.
This one question, so you, you may have stated that one, make sure I'm clear, so you, you actually talked with the city and/or the developer, or whomever, that looking at a gated entry on the backside of Tray Lane? And they have agreed to that, not that they have to, because that's wholly, that's solely a, a city project if it was annexed.
Right, I had no control over it here. But when we worked, when I was over there, that was one of the discussion items that we had, was that there would, there has to be a secondary entrance, it's too many apartments, they have a single entrance, and so they would need a secondary entrance.
Understood, and I, I guess, when you said that, I thought maybe that's the discussion you had with them recently, but this was some of your...
This was last year.
Last year, okay, so hopefully they'll build at least, because you can't, well, we can't control that, if by chance it was annexed, we can't control that other than making that suggestion, but we got to decide on, as a commission, preferably trucks, 18 wheelers versus 18 hoppers, you know, so you, you can decide on that, so it's...
A lot more than 18 cars.
Well, I'm being facetious, I'm not, but, but with that, that's, that's what determines the factor, because we could easily, I don't like to do what I call spot zoning, to actually pull off something like this, to say, make it available for them, and not saying that they would or we would, you know, but am I correct in that statement?
Wait, you're, you're, the only fine anointment is that a piece of it's already in the city.
That's correct.
The northern parts are already in the city, so you need the combined acreage to do the density.
You're exactly right.
And part of this has a river flowing through it, it has the creek flow through the middle, and you can't build on that, so you wind up losing some of the land to open space, which is a requirement of development.
Understood, understood.
So it's kind of, it's a little more complicated than the map's actually showing, but we just want to make sure that you were aware, here's two annexations, here's a process, we'd like to bring them to you from now on, so you are aware of what the city's being asked, asking of you, whose land is of the city for a development, and the change that the development would bring.
And for, for clarity, the city will be responsible for that area, the city will, it won't be, uh, the responsibility of the county?
Well, other than the roads that McGill is in charge of, which is by statute or by agreement until 2025, there are a few roads that the city will access, like Riverside, where another 300 apartment complex is going in, where, again...
Right, 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 those, those that were doing the S D S that we did a while back, yeah, yeah, so, so those are the only roads, McGill, that one, Riverside, and...
There's, there's a handful, but the city would be in charge of whatever here, and the developer would have to be in charge of what's internal to this, this site itself, obviously, and its connection to Preston.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, well, Commissioners, we're going to just omit the committee updates today, we won't have those updates. However, I just encourage the, the directors to just have your, your updates ready for our next meeting, and that, that it be first, I'll go with the others first. So with that being said, do you have anything else?
Yeah, just one, one point, and I, just on this, I don't think there was an ask, prior question, it wasn't an ask for this, this annexation, but I'm letting go of the multifamily, the apartments, I'm going back to 130 acres on Riverside. We're talking about the current, the FedEx across the street, the Kyle County right across the corner, is a million square feet, think about switch, a million square feet, how big that is, um, the area we're talking about right up there now, Chief Bob, all of that, that's a million square feet on 30, 50 acres, say 50 acres, you're talking about 130 acres, we're talking about maybe 2 million square feet. Yeah, I know what volume that is?
Right.
You're talking about Riverside, we're talking about that intersection Riverside going, going, and it keeps getting torn up just by the current volume, and so I'm, Miguel, you know, rebuild, what, what that takes, I mean, you got to sometimes think through the impact of what we are responsible for. No, I can't control it, yes, okay, I get it, but there's an impact to us that it's a cost that we have absorbed, and they don't really have to absorb it, we do. So I just wanted to put that record, I'm sure, while I'm like, okay, that's just, geez, 2 million square feet potentially dropped on there, in addition to the apartments that are coming? You're talking about density, and so again, go back to transportation and the need to budget for maintenance, which is the daily maintenance, just for the record.
Yeah, hold it there. So, more like you might have one of those, I have this thing on that.
I know, I, I keep spawning.
Which you're absolutely right, and, and I think this is when we'll go, is it next year, or you have, when we get to the S D S, we'll actually deal with that particular scenario exactly, because that's going to be a huge impact. You're absolutely right, because, yes, they, they got whatever small roads within there, but they, they got to get to Riverside, Tray Lane and so on, which we are responsible for, so at the end of the day, that's when we start looking at that S D S scenario to kind of offset those kind of costs, but that will...
Those two things you need to be tied together.
Yes.
Future annexations, we're responsible for road and road.
Why, I totally agree, I mean, you, you're on with something, yeah, absolutely. We're good, you're bad.
Thank you so much. Attorney Bernard, do we need to go into executive session?
Begrudgingly, with the habits filed on our face, we need to go into executive session for real estate, litigation, and personnel.
Board Commissioners, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So, move.
Motion, set in all the places, just keep our legal right hand, thank you, 10 minutes late. Thank you. And then we'll... Hey, Board Commissioners, we are back on air, and we've had a very lengthy meeting and very productive meeting today. Do we have any other questions coming into consideration?
No, ma'am.
One thing.
Commissioner Dider?
I had a complaint from someone that lives off of Britton Road, I think, and the logging trucks where they're cutting all these trees are going down there, and he says it's a busy, naked, dirt truck road, and they're carrying up paper.
What street is this?
I think it's Britton, Britton Road out next to, I forgot, Main Road.
Okay. Well, our D O T, you just told me to read, to be reading, I read it.
I believe you know somebody at the state that you have to not cut through on county roads and stuff, because it's a long logging.
Okay. And then I just have a quick update, I had an opportunity to visit Fair Play Park and Bill Art Park and Post Road Park and Winston Park this week, those parks are definitely showing their age, there's the two particular, which is Bill Art Park and the Fair Play, are 60 years old, so we have an opportunity to, to, to look at some things, the playgrounds were not, they were substandard, I want to make sure we get those screwed up, and I'm working on a plan, and I'll bring that plan forward to the Board Commissioners, I know we have some other things that are related to the floss, but those playgrounds for our babies, especially our little one and two-year-olds, they deserve that, and they're just really old, like, we do about 15, almost 16 years old, so we just need to change them now. So I will be bringing a plan forward to the Board Commissioners. With that being said, this meeting is adjourned.
Adjourned, I'm saying adjourned.